Okay, good evening. I'm Janet Anderson. I'm calling to order the Town of Lewisboro Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, August 20th, 2024 at 7:35 PM. So for everyone, the exit is the way you came in. These exits to my left are for emergencies only. In order to comply with the open meetings law, we must meet in person. The Planning Board does not have the capacity for the public to attend by Zoom, and we can't stream our meeting to YouTube. However, we will post an audio recording of this meeting to the town website. And materials considered at this meeting are available in the agenda packet, and members of the public can always express their views by mail or email to planning@lewissboroonyork.gov. Sorry, louisboro NY.gov. Kirsten Conrad, our Planning Board Administrator, has confirmed that the meeting has been duly noticed and legal notice requirements fulfilled. Joining me tonight from the Town of Lewisboro are members of the Planning Board, Paul Fusco, John Guzmano, Bruce Thompson. We do have a quorum, and thus we can conduct the business of the board and vote on any matters that come before us. We also have our consultant, Jan Johannesen from KSCJ Consulting, I'll get that right, and Council Judd Seabird. We have the Planning Board Administrator, Kirsten Conrad, the Building Inspector, Kevin Kelly. And so with that, let's get started. The first item on our agenda is the calendar number 02-24 PB. This is the Palermo Residence, 9 Fairmount Road, Golden's Bridge, New York. This is the application for the legalization of an existing deck and tree removal. This application has been before us. It has gone to the ZBA. We've gotten their views on this, and they did approve a variance. And we have a resolution that was prepared by Jan that's been circulated to the board. So Jan, perhaps you could briefly highlight the resolution?
It's a site development plan approval resolution. As you mentioned, legalization of an existing deck and removal of one tree. Because this is located in the Meade Family zoning district, any application that requires a building permit also requires site plan approval. That's why they're here. They're also proposing to resurface the deck and make some safety repairs. They did receive a zoning board area variance for setback in coverage on July 10th, 2024. They received ATCRC approval. It's a type 2 action under SEACRA. The plans are listed here in the resolution, and the only condition is that they obtain a building permit prior to construction.
Okay, so if there aren't any questions, I look for a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Jan, and a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm Elsa.
August.
Right. Do you want me to fill out everybody, or just sign?
Just sign.
Okay. When you weren't here, I had to do some stuff.
Just give you the permit.
Got a whole pile here.
I think I already had a teed up.
You want it? Okay. Good night.
Good night.
All right. The next item on our agenda is calendar number 10-24 PB. This is the Stoya Deck on 151 J Court in Cross River, New York. This is a similar situation. This is now an application for replacing and enlarging a deck. We saw this last month and sent a letter to the Building Inspector to make sure of zoning compliance. Perhaps, Kevin, you could tell us?
Yeah, we reviewed that. We pulled the site plan, and they have no encroachment issues there, so they are fine to proceed along as long as the board says it to go.
Great.
Okay, so again, we asked Jan to prepare a resolution. So Jan, perhaps you can go through that?
Good. More situation, as you mentioned, site development plan approval. They're proposing to demo and expand their existing deck, 151 J Court in the Meadows. The proposed deck would be 13 feet 4 inches by 14 feet, including steps to a landing. They are approximately 83.75 feet to the nearest property line. It's been referred to the Building Inspector. It's been approved by ATCRC. It's a type 2 action under SEACRA. Similar conditions, just obtain a building permit.
Okay. Anyone? I'd look for a motion to approve this as just described. Okay, Bruce Moose?
I'll second.
Jan, seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can you?
Okay, the next item on our agenda is calendar number 09-24 PB, calendar number 19-24 WP, calendar number 12-24 SW. This is the Villas at Vista, 920 Oak Ridge Commons, South Salem, New York. And this is a coordinated SEACRA review related to the application for the construction of 12 housing units in Building 9, four of which were previously approved. And so what we were, what we discussed is the significance, and we've got a neg deck that was prepared by Jan. So that's a determination of negative significance. And a resolution that Judd prepared to adopt the neg deck. So, and these were both previously distributed. Do we have any? I don't know. Do you want to go through it quickly, or?
Very quickly. As you know, the board conducted a coordinated review as lead agency went through the circulation process. It's an unlisted action under SEACRA. The neg deck provides a pretty thorough project description, and then goes through the criteria for determining significance, which are outlined in the SEACRA statute. And there's kind of findings to support your decision, as there should be. And there's narrative that explains the minimal impact regarding a number of different items of concern, such as land disturbance, wetland buffer disturbance, stormwater management, water and sewer usage, traffic and parking, noise, solid waste. It makes reference to a variety of different reports and calculations that the applicant has prepared. I'm happy to go into further detail, but there are, no, there's.
They're outlined in there, yeah.
To the criteria.
Does anybody have any questions on that? Okay, I'd look for a motion to approve the resolution that basically adopts the neg deck.
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution and adopt the neg deck.
Okay.
I'll second.
Bruce, seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Is it possible to schedule the public hearing for the next month's meeting?
Okay, so have you guys been to the ZBA? I know you need a variance.
We did not.
They needed the neg deck.
Oh, that's true.
The ZBA.
Now we can go to the ZBA.
Now you can go to the ZBA. So we can't, I'm not sure offhand of the agenda. We can't close the public hearing until we hear back from the ZBA. So whether you want it, I'm certainly willing, I think we're certainly willing to schedule it. But we, do you want it in September or October is the question? I mean, I don't know whether you'd.
We'd like to schedule for September.
You would?
September 6th, I think is the cutoff for to get on that calendar for September.
Very close. Do you know the date of the ZBA meeting? Is it better?
No, but the, for notice purposes, it's the 6th, I believe is the cutoff.
We typically meet after the ZBA.
Yeah, I mean, so I guess I'm just trying to figure that out.
For ZBA, September 25th meeting. Kevin's right, materials need to be in complete application by September 6th.
But that would be, the meeting would be September 25th?
25th after ours.
Which is after ours. So October. I mean, I'm, otherwise.
We couldn't talk about it in September, our September meeting, because it's going to be after.
Well, we could talk about it, but we couldn't close it. We can't do anything.
Yeah, I mean, you could open the public hearing. It's just I wouldn't close until after we hear from this.
Right, so we have, give people two times to show up. So I'm, I'm thinking perhaps we say October, but maybe we direct a resolution?
I think there's, I think you're very, very close. And the items that are outstanding probably could be addressed between now and then. But I think we're waiting on a couple of things, like the design tops for the water quality structure.
I have that.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
And I think we wanted.
We have four architecturals.
Yes, and we have the turning radiuses. What we don't have yet is the lighting and the design of the retaining walls, which I think could be conditioned.
The lighting would have to, would have to be a part of the approval. Couldn't be, the retaining walls concerned couldn't be conditioned.
Okay.
But the board approves the lighting plan.
Yeah, we wanted to also get a written letter from, I think, the Fire Department. I know that we've been advised that we had, that the Fire Department was okay, but we really like communication directly from them. Do we have that?
He said that we had to get it from Kevin. As the Fire Marshal.
No, the, the last meeting with Hine indicated that Phil hadn't met with the Fire Department, and everything seemed okay.
Yes.
We need a letter from the Fire Department, from Vista Fire Department.
So you need a letter from them, not from the Fire Marshal?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I think that's what we've done in the past.
Sometimes the Building Department and Building Inspector will help facilitate the referral process, and if the Fire Department asks questions, they might, especially with regard, so Fire Code might rely on Building Inspector, but we always get a letter from that.
Okay. The way, he said to us is that we have to get that from the Fire Marshal. But he had no problem with it.
He can call me, yeah, a letter from him.
We'll get it from him.
Right.
Try to do your letter on Monday.
Okay, thank you.
And then you just got to get the list from Donna for the.
On your service. Okay. So we'll wait till, schedule that next month?
Well, we can schedule it now for October. But if it's all right to just do October, I think since we can't close it, we can, we can move it along, and we'll, we'll look at anything, obviously, that gets submitted.
Yeah, maybe if you could submit those open items for the September meeting, you can be in better shape for October.
Okay.
Right, I think also, I mean, I looked at the county planning. I think you addressed the question that had been about bike storage, but I don't really know what they meant about better pathways through the community, you know, make it more accessible for people to be able to, you know, walk. There's something about sidewalks or bike paths through the, through Oak Ridge and to access other things. I think it's probably part of the county's general desire to see more sidewalks and infrastructure build up for pedestrians and bikes. So I don't.
We have sidewalks around.
You do have sidewalks. Maybe.
I'm sure all you could do there.
Yeah.
We also put a, one of the previous approvals, we put a bike rack between Building 2, which is the main front building, and the building where the dentist is. I don't know if you know what we call it, Building 4. It's never been huge. We never see anybody in it. So I don't think there's a great need for, you know, isolated bike lanes.
Yeah, okay.
Nobody's going to be there, so.
All right.
Do you have a copy of the county planning letter?
Yes, I do.
It may be helpful if you could just provide responses to those comments so that could be discussed after next meeting.
Absolutely, great, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate your time.
All right, anybody else have any questions for him? Okay, good. All right. Next item on our agenda is the start of a public hearing. And if, I'm just going to remind people that if you want to speak at any one of these public hearings, please sign up with Kirsten. So the, I've lost my notes. Okay, so a public hearing, I'm just going to remind everybody that the purpose of the public hearing is for the board to hear the concerns and comments of the public. And the comments should always be addressed to the Planning Board, not to the applicant. This is not necessarily meant to be a dialogue. What we try to do is to listen to the comments and take them into consideration. So for that, the first, first public hearing we have tonight is calendar number 06-23 PB, calendar number 18-24 WP, calendar number 11-24 SW. This is the Double H Farms Reed subdivision at 20 Fountainville Road South in Cross River, New York. This is the application for a subdivision plus a sidewalk report. We opened this public hearing in June. We continued it to July and again to tonight. So if the applicant would allow, first I'll start off with the site visit report. So we had this on August 17th at 9:00 AM at 45 Cross River Home, Cross River Road, which was the Reed home. The attendees included Kevin Reed, the applicant, and Don McKenzie from Insight, a much longer name, but Insight. From the Planning Board, it was John Guzmano, Charlene Delicato, and myself. That, when we arrived, we met at the driveway. We first walked uphill towards the Double H Farms property to understand the general layout. We could see the edge of the property line, which was approximately the location of a deer fence to the south and east. Then we walked north to see that property line. That was a bit beyond a wellhouse. We discussed the access that is visible on Google Earth, and we were told of a gate behind the barn that provides access to that new lot that, that's going to be joined to the Reed house. We then returned and went out past the front of the house to look at the span of the property from along the road. We first went north. We were told that in the spring, the parcel that would be purchased was very wet, and we could see the drainage that flows under Route 121. We were told that this parcel, the edges were wooded, but the area inside that we couldn't see was an open meadow. And this area was on a curve of 121, we could see that. We then walked along the road to the southern edge of the Reed property, and again could see that there was a rock line waterway that existed on the lot that was largely treated. And then we walked back and returned to the driveway area. So, oh, yeah. Yeah, okay, so that was, that was the sidewalk.
Thank you for that.
I'm P. Daniel Hollis from Gettler-Waldinger, Monteleone, Bushill and Hollis, attorneys for Kevin and Felicia Reed, the co-applicants, along with Double H. With me tonight are Mr. Reed, whom you met last month, Charles Martobano, who's the attorney for the co-applicant, and the aforementioned Don McKenzie, who accompanied you on the sidewalk. And Don will put up the plat there, just because I need to make reference to it just for a moment. I received a draft of a proposed resolution. I reviewed it with my client and went over it myself. I have two comments if I might present them. The first is that in the most recent draft, and I recognize the haste with which these things have to be done at the last minute, but in the conditions, paragraph 2 and 3 are redundant. They make the same reference to the well.
Okay.
So with regard to the well, Ms. McKenzie is still with Insight Engineering, and you can point out where it is. Thank you, Don. And it's nothing new, because it's been there quite some time. And one of the conditions was that we provide to the satisfaction of the Planning Board Attorney documentation with regard to the easement. And I have a copy. Don got it offline, and I have it tonight. I'll hand it up to Judd. I think it's, the most instructive part of it is that it was originally between the owners of what was then Encore Farms and Richard Feigen. It was adopted in 1995. There's, you know, the usual obligation on the part of Feigen, who was enjoying the benefit of the well, to do all the things necessary to get it, keep it going. But the most instructive paragraph is paragraph 9, that this license permit and its maintenance shall terminate and be revoked in its entirety upon 60 days' written notice at any time and for any reason whatsoever, or for no reason. Such notices to be sent to Taylor, the owner of Encore, by Feigen, or vice versa. So while there's an easement in place, and it's apparently working, it's revocable, would be revocable by our client if the subdivision is granted. End this up to you. Jan referenced a librarian page with the recording information in it.
Thank you.
The second point I wanted to make would be with paragraph condition 1 and condition now 12, it had been 13, with regard to the current future owner of the Reed parcel. Slide 4 shall apply to the Planning Board for site plan development approval and for any other approvals that may be applicable under the Planning Board jurisdiction in connection with the construction of any new building or expansion of any existing building which construction exceeds 600 square feet. Any new or expanded driveway or change in driveway surfaces, and any activity requiring a town stormwater permit or wetland activity permit, regardless of whether said activity is categorized as administrative under the code. What I would respectfully ask for the board to consider is going to the fifth whereas on the first page, that where the reference to the Reed parcel appears for the first time, that the Reed parcel be then further or more properly defined as the Reed parcel addition. And that the restrictions set forth in paragraph, condition 1 in 13, now 12, be applied only to those two lots. Otherwise, the applicant, co-applicant, Mr. Reed and his wife would be forfeiting any rights that they currently have on the existing parcel. And since the concern really is that anything not be done on those two parcels in the way of development, we respectfully request that you consider that amendment to the draft that you have in front of you.
Okay. We had asked for a, as in the last meeting, we discussed having a buildout of the consolidated lot prepared. And, and at that time, we said the alternate would be to look at any future building that was done. This is now going to be one lot, if I understand your plans correctly.
Correct.
And so I don't know how we, I don't know how we would, I think we, we put these conditions on a lot. I mean, I don't know how we would do this on a partial lot.
Well, I think there's probably a way to delineate, perhaps on the plan, which would, you know, with quotation marks, Reed parcel addition.
Right, but I think, and I think the point stands. I mean, we want to know what's going to happen with the combined parcel.
For example, if there is a, the reason I think it's really a forfeiture on the, of the Reed's property rights in the existing parcel by doing that. And if the concern, rightfully so, is that the area being acquired for buffer isn't going to be developed without further review by this board, we're perfectly okay with that. But I think it's confiscatory to do otherwise and impose if, for example, Mr. Reed and his wife wanted to add on to the barn building for some reason.
Right.
You know, why would we have, as a right, no, I don't know what the plan would like, but I'll just call it as a right. I think it would be a waste of time and money that me and Ms. McKenzie have to come here and ask for that to be approved. If it's an as a right matter, it could go straight to the Building Department. A building permit obtained, built according to the plan, CVO issued. If the, if the goal is to not overdevelop that area sought to for a buffer, I respectfully request that let's restrict, have oversight for that area, not the whole property.
So I, I hear what you've said. I think it's been something, this is a condition we've applied in the past when people have not been willing to do buildout analysis. You know, I'll, my view, it's a reasonable condition. It's, it's only, I mean, it's, you can do certain things under 600 square feet, you know, so sheds and other things are exempted. This is really a substantial kind of change to the property. And I think that was what, we wanted to know what was going to happen. I'll ask, you know, other people for their, their views, but.
Where is the wetlands buffer area in relation to their house? The current house?
They don't have the wetlands delineated.
We don't have it.
The parcel's being acquired, so you can, they are, there are wetlands there. I'm sure. Maybe what the Chairperson was speaking about that area, the.
Well, my, the reason I was asking the question was simply if it's in the wetlands buffer, and Mr. Reed chooses to do some sort of big addition, he'd have to come in front of us anyway. That's why I was asking. So that would get around.
But we don't, we don't know the extent of the buffer.
Yeah, we don't really know. We haven't looked at the wetlands, and we haven't looked at the.
Okay. It was just a thought. Trying to figure out a way that works for everybody.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I like it the way it is. I think it's a good way to manage it from our concerns going forward. My only thing, we had in the resolution, it talks about structures and driveways. It doesn't note, or maybe I'm missing it, the, like any patios or any other impervious, does it explicitly note?
The way it's written now is buildings and driveways. I kind of deliberately eliminated structures, because that'd be place sets and things of that nature. So, I mean, you could certainly add them, but right now, I think it's building, building, expansion of driveways and change in driveway surfaces. And the 600 square feet is basically taken out of the wetlands ordinance. That is what you, that's your threshold for Planning Board review if it was in a wetland buffer, so that's the number I used.
So it's the same as if it's not in the wetland buffer, it's for purposes of consistency.
Right.
Ms. Johannesen, I spoke about that.
And because it's a, we do see things built that are under 600 square feet, and typically it's a fairly minor change. I mean, once you get up to 600 square feet, you're talking something sizable.
About 30 by 20.
Yeah, it's a fairly sizable change. Okay, do we have to do anything about striking out?
Yeah, I can, I see it.
Sorry, Jan, I didn't see it till late.
No problem. I'll, I'll send a revised resolution with that.
I mean, or we could just strike it. It's.
It's up to you. You would have to.
And renumber?
Renumber, and the last bit resolved.
Or we could just leave it in and have it, no, okay, if you redo it. All right, so I'd look for.
We can approve it.
We can approve it with this, as amended, right? So I'd look for a motion to approve as amended?
Well, we still have time here.
Oh, we have the public hearing open, sorry. Does, is there, there are people who want to talk? Let's, let's, do you have any more comments?
No, I just hope that, you know, I read an email that was provided through the board. I just hope we stay on topic and not get into any side issues involving parties that aren't part of the.
I am going to do my best, so please, you do the same. Thank you. Okay, so do we?
Deanie is our first, and if there are other people in the audience who want to speak at this public hearing, if we can bring the side of eight to you.
Hello, everybody. I'm not getting, I'm not even nervous about being up here this time, which is.
Great. Great.
I'd like to introduce Lee Vogelstein, who owned the property up until H purchased it. And so what, I go back...
Okay, I'm sorry. I should ask you for name and address just for the tape because I know you wrote it down.
To Bountonville Road, Cross River.
And Forty-Ninth Florence Drive in Chapel Point, New York.
Great, thank you.
My first question was, and they had started certainly talking about it, was the well that the church uses. My question was because of the last time you guys had mentioned wells and nothing had been brought up. If the owner of the church had been contacted and made aware of this, because she's a neighbor, she lives on Hook Road, she owns ABC Carpet. And I think, you know, every neighbor, whether they show up here or not, should be contacted. That was a question. You guys can answer it. It may have already been done. I have no idea. So that was one of them. My second one is always going back to the zoning. The present zoning is two acres. All of Birdstone is two acres, except if you go onto Pound Ridge, but we're concerned with only Lewisboro. And I am concerned what will happen if they subdivide that. And I understand Mr. Reed says nothing is going to happen. You know, we'd have to do it down the road. But that's, that doesn't allay my fears. Because I would love to know, if you could ask Mr. Reed, what was, when he bought the property from Mr. Janelle, who we now know owns the property, I did not know that before, what he told them the zoning was, or could it be downzoned? I'm very curious because Lee knows, she knows, she's had so many studies done on the property. And that's a question I really am concerned about because Mr. Reed also mentioned, you know, he's a commercial, he does commercial. And he kept saying he was so upset about six hundred and fifty thousand, he was overpaying for the property. Whether he was or not, that wasn't our problem. I don't care. I mean, he has money, he can do whatever he wants. But it does concern me when somebody is saying that. And then I'm not, I'm hearing that he's not willing to comply with a site plan, you know, showing what possibly could be the yield, not for a lot on the right, you know, the first lot in Pound Ridge, that's closest to Pound Ridge, because that's not even buildable, but the other lot. And so I'm, you know, I'm saying, is he, you know, is he paying so much money and feels so that he needs to know? And is this why it's being rushed to get this passed? And I think the neighbors deserve that answer.
Okay. So, yeah, I thought we had talked about this a little bit before. So first of all, thank you for the information about the well, as you can tell...
I have more information about the well.
I'm sorry?
I have more information about the well.
Okay, well...
She said about the well, I spoke to the woman from ABC Carpet a long time ago about the well. And I had the whole well investigated and everything else. So, you know, what happened is that no one knows who owns the well. And I was told by, and it was Bunny Associates at the time.
Sorry, if people are speaking, they should announce themselves, sign in.
She did sign in.
Okay, but she doesn't have the floor.
Please take my...
Okay.
You've got it.
It's Lee Vogelstein and I previously owned Birdstone Farm for twenty years. So we came across the well by accident and we called Bunny. And they came over and they investigated the whole thing about the well. I called the lady who owns ABC Carpet. She pretended, well, maybe she didn't, she didn't know anything about the well. She bought the property, the well was there, et cetera, et cetera. So at one time, when Adam Newman was buying the house at the top of the Birdstone Farm, he inquired about the well. So he said, oh, does it affect my property in any way?
Sorry, the well on the parcel that's being subdivided? Okay.
So anyway, we said, no, of course, it doesn't affect your, you know, anything to do with your water. He was afraid it was somehow affecting the flow of his water. Anyway, so Bunny said, look, this well is so old. And when you look at exactly, and he, they did the survey, when you look at where the well is, he said, somebody just, this well was put in before anybody ever did anything about where property lines. He said, this well is only maybe like five inches over where it should be. So he said, my thing is to just leave it alone. The only, the only other alternative would be to tell the woman that she has to build a new well and get off your property. So we let it, we let it go. So, you know, to say whether Feigen owned it or whoever, I mean, that's what I was told. There's no, and he looked it up. They couldn't find anything about who owned the well, who drilled the well, or how it got there. And they said that they really feel it's so old that it couldn't, it couldn't be. Now, we go to the other parcels. I had all sorts of surveys done on those two parcels because when I first bought the property, Dan Janelle was saying, oh, you know, you could build on those properties, you could sell those two, you could build on them, blah, blah, blah. Okay, so with lawyer John Arons. Again, we had all these surveys done. We were in contact with the wetlands people. They said it was wetlands. They weren't too happy about it. The road, the little road that goes up there really wasn't passable anyway, but it's on the town line. There is a road there. But they came to the conclusion, it's too wet, that to try to build anything up there, the amount of excavation that would be necessary in order to build anything up there would be so astronomical, it's not worth it. He said, you could never get your money back. What's the point? So the only other alternative is I would have to give someone access if I had it. I'd have to give someone access through Birdstone Farm. He said that, he didn't recommend that. He said, you know, because if you sell it, now you have a problem, right? So he said, the only thing, you know, you could do with it is, you know, you could build like a small guest house, something that you would use for yourself or whatever. He said, but, so that's why we're concerned about it. I mean, all the information that I have about it and that I went through to see about it, sort of doesn't agree at all with anything that anybody's saying here. You know, there's a different approach to the whole thing. So that's why I came, because I did do a lot of research on this. I did spend hundreds of thousands of dollars because there's two other flags further down on 121 going towards Pound Ridge. Also, I had been, we had been in touch at that time with Jim Perry. So he knows all about it. And he said that that particular thing, it had to be both Lewisboro and Pound Ridge to do anything with any, any part of those two flags.
Okay, thank you. So, so I think we have, oh, is there anyone else who wants to speak from on this matter, on the subdivision?
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
One more. Has anybody, because the judges, who are the owners at present, but really are not the owners and have a contractual...
Just ask the question, okay.
Yeah. Has anyone spoken to the judges and asked them if, because I know Mr. Reed is concerned about what could happen there. Has anyone talked to the judges and asked them what they would do with that property? Because, you know, I look at what the judges are doing. They're doing a beautiful job. But I look at that property and I say, you know what? They've done their whole site plan on sixty acres. But, you know, let's find more acres. Maybe that would, maybe it would allow them three more horses if they needed it. Doubtful, but, you know, it's a question that I'm curious about.
So I don't think we can, as we talked about last time, we can't stop people from doing something that's injurious to their own, to their own, you know, best interest if they make that decision. Okay, so I think it's, we've heard something about the well now. We've, I think we've discussed zoning last time, that to change the zoning is a town board, is a town board decision. We do not, this board does not have the capability to change zoning. So that would be a town board thing. And we have now put into the proposed resolution something that requires us to see what, what will happen if, if these parcels decide, you know, if they, if they are going to be further developed.
Okay, I ask one other thing because this concerns me. Regarding those two parcels, okay, I was told by Jim Perry and also by Lewisboro that in order to sell them or to do anything with them, I would have to have a lot line change. That now, that was a long time ago, a lot line change. And yet, the way I was told that, which again, you know, I was, it was not the truth in the end, that Dan Janelle owned it. I did not know that either. Okay, so the point is, is though, that was part of Birdstone Farm. I mean, that was Birdstone Farm, those two parcels. So how is it that Dan Janelle somehow acquired those two parcels without a lot line change? I don't understand how I would have had to have a lot line change, but somehow he just had to have a lot line change. And it was part of Birdstone Farm. It's not like it was a separate piece of property on its own.
So the application before us is for, I mean, we're calling it a subdivision, but it is essentially a lot line change. And that is the application that's in front of us. And I, my understanding, although I could be corrected, that the, that the sale won't be consummated until the lot line change takes place.
Okay.
Yep.
Janet, I hate to do this, but what happens because of what has been arisen? And that, as I said, Mrs. Vogelstein sold the property to a hobbyer user. And I know you guys don't get into our...
Yeah, I don't, I don't know anything about all the history here.
...our side of this board's jurisdiction.
I understand.
We have, we have before us an extant application for a lot line change.
I understand.
That is what we are supposed to examine and pass upon, okay? All of these other issues, if you have concerns, there are other forms for you to raise.
And we have, we have done that.
But for this board, we have an extant application for a lot line change. It has been examined. The building inspector has looked at it. There's been a determination that that lot line change will create no zoning nonconformity. We've revised the lot line change resolution to anticipate or to deal with future changes on the lot with regard to the well, which is something we just learned about. We have asked for documentation. I've been provided with documentation. I'll look at that. That's a condition that best me with the ability to do so. So I, you know, you have to recognize and appreciate that this board's jurisdiction, its function, its obligation here is simply to pass upon the lot line subdivision application.
My only, the only reason why I brought it up, that if that, that piece of property is the only remaining piece, and if there is an issue then with, with the state, what happens if you, if you, if you do it and they sell the property to Mr. Reed? That's the concern, just that I'm not...
We can't, we can't take that into consideration. That's beyond us.
We, we get our powers by what the town board says.
And the town board.
And the town code, right, yeah. And so we're basically, you know, beyond that, we're, it's, it's a different issue. Okay, so is there anyone else who wants to speak at the public hearing on this matter? Please, we're going to need you to sign and then give, give us your name and address, please.
My name is Dan Janelle. I just want to clarify the record, which has absolutely nothing to do with the lot line change. But my reputation has been impugned. It's in the public record. It's libelous. It's outrageous. It's unethical. It's against every, that I have ever had any ownership of this property. And the lies and the conspiracies continue to be spewed in a public forum, which are liable per se and are going to be in the proper form, as you guys have just mentioned. But I just want to make sure that you're aware that I'll be back to the board with the evidence to belie all of the conspiracies and lies that have been spewed on the record, sent to the planning board a couple of days ago, stating that I had an ownership interest in the property. Endless conspiracies of Adam Newman, on and on and on. So I just want to make the record clear that I'm a realtor, been good standing for fifty years in Northern Westchester. And to hear the constant lies and innuendo is just beyond the pale. So I just...
Do you have anything on the, specific on this lot line change too?
Other than that, there was correspondence that was sent to this planning board, which is on the record, the public record, which is liable, per se liable, and it is outrageous and it's unethical. And I just want to make sure that, that you don't go...
You just put it on the record.
Yeah.
You don't go on thinking that I have, have ever had any ownership interest whatsoever in the property. So it just, it's beyond the pale.
Great. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, let's go.
Okay. Anybody else? Going once? Okay. So we'd look, I'd look for a motion to close the, do you want to say?
No, no, just, Eric, did you have any questions for me?
Oh, okay.
I don't have any.
We're ready for a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion that we close this public hearing.
John, anyone second, boost seconds? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, now, we have a resolution. And I think one of the things, I mean, so we, Mr. Hollis was kind enough to kind of go through some of the, the changes that we've had. But maybe, Jan, you could hit on anything we need to...
Yeah, I just want to get to the quick version here. It's a final subdivision plot approval for a lot line realignment between H Farms, Elsie and the Reeds. The resolution explains, the proposed action explains the previous action approved by the board from H and their site development plan approval. Makes reference to that resolution. The application before you tonight is lot line realignment involving the transfer of approximately six point nine acres from H to the Reeds, resulting in the H parcel being reduced to approximately thirty-seven point two acres and the Reed parcel being increased to twelve acres. The proposed action will have the effect of eliminating H's road frontage on Cross River Road. H has significant road frontage on Bountonville Road, a town road, and access to Bountonville Road. And it has access to Bountonville Road by two existing driveways, which were determined to be adequate by the planning board. The potential for future access to H's parcel from Cross River Road was analyzed by the applicant and determined not to be viable due to topography, wetlands, wetland buffers, site distance, DOT standards, and DEP restrictions. The applicant did not evaluate the future development potential of the Reed parcel under present zoning environmental laws. And the Reeds have stated, the purpose for the, acquiring the land from H is to provide a buffer to the existing farm. The Reed's parcel, the potential for further subdivision is limited for those same reasons, zoning restrictions, topography, wetlands, wetland buffers, site distance, DEP restrictions. Because the parcel and the future development was not analyzed, we have included that, that condition that requires the applicant to come back to the planning board for site plan approval if it constructs a building over six hundred square feet. Planning board resolution makes reference to the sidewalk conducted on August seventeenth. The duly noticed public hearing, which was opened on July sixteenth, closed this evening.
I think actually it was opened in June, I think, June eighteenth.
June eighteenth, okay. Okay.
I just looked in my book. So, I think we actually--
I think that's right. Because it was one meeting, I wasn't at. It's my third meeting. There was a meeting before that, but I wasn't--
Yeah, but that wasn't a public hearing.
Okay.
I think the public hearing was opened in June. According to my--
It was, yeah.
Yeah. So, that would be June 18th.
Okay, I'll make that change.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't catch that before.
The conditions prior to the signing of the plat include the note that we spoke about regarding future site plan approval. That'd be listed on the plat. Documentation regarding the well is to be reviewed by planning board council. It's been provided this evening. I'll strike the second condition, which is verbatim. Our prior comments were satisfied. There's some signature blocks that need to be added to the plan. There's a signature block for the town of Penbridge Planning Board, which is a requirement. Fees and escrow need to be paid.
And I believe, I'm going to say again, the fees and escrow need to get paid. Okay. So, look for a motion to approve as--
With the amendments and conditions?
Well, I have a question.
Yes.
I just want to be clear, going back and forth. This is going to result in one fewer lots here because when this lot is joined to the Reeds--
To be merged.
It'll be merged, correct?
Yes, sir. No new lots are created by this. No new lots are created.
Actually, one less lot.
Correct.
No. Currently, it's, the farm is all one lot and Reed's is one lot. What it's now going to be is a smaller farm and a bigger Reed's, but it's still going to be the two lots.
Well, that's, but there was then a third lot in there, a tax lot owned by, that had a--
It looks that way in the drawing.
--changing ownership.
It looks that way in the drawing, but it's--
But there's no lot line going to be between, in the Reed's total now.
Correct.
Correct?
The two edges are going to get, right, but it was--
Reed's is not going to wind up with two tax lots.
Correct.
Is that correct?
They're going to have one.
Okay, fine.
Right, right.
That's it.
Okay. We got it? Okay.
We want to make a motion to accept this resolution with the conditional changes--
Right.
--that Jan is going to put in and corrections.
Right. So, is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Bruce seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you want me to sign this page? It's going to be a slightly different length.
I would wait for--
I can send it directly. No, Kirsten will be out tomorrow. I'll send it directly to you tomorrow.
Okay. Do you want me to then take it to Janet? Does this, no, I mean, this is one of these five-day things, right? Okay. No, I don't mind. Send it to me.
I can write in the motion in a second.
Okay. I just have to remember.
I made the motion.
Bruce second.
And Bruce seconded it.
Okay. Any, yeah, so you put absent, right, on that? Okay. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, the motion carries. Thank you. And we'll get this finalized as we go. Okay. So, so the next item on our agenda is another public hearing. This is calendar number 10-17 PB, calendar 19-22 SW. This is Mercedes-Benz of Golden's Bridge, 321 Main Street, Golden's Bridge, New York. And this is an application for an amendment to the site development plan approval. Okay, so--
Can we take the meeting outside, please?
Excuse me. Could you please?
Thank you.
And does anyone want to sign the statement on Mercedes-Benz?
Okay. So, this is a public hearing that we will open tonight on Mercedes-Benz. We did issue a neg deck at our last meeting. Okay. So, and step forward this public hearing.
Yes, good evening. Michael Sirdnau from the OpTic. I'm going to let the project architect and project engineer just highlight the changes from their previous approval for the public, members of the public industry. Anthony, on the far--
Sure. Good evening. For the record, my name is Anthony Nestor with the firm JMC, and we are the project site engineers, project engineers, and landscape architects for the project. And before I start, this is for you. So, as Mr. Sirdnau suggested, I'm just going to go through some of the key components of the application from the previous approved project. So, on the top over here is the original, the latest approved site plan for the Mercedes-Benz project. And the amendment includes--
Yeah. Can you guys see it okay?
I previewed it online before.
Okay. All right. So--
So, some of the key points in the amendment to the plan, to the site plan was, one, I'll start from the right side, which is the north end of the site, is the elimination of the 41 space car stacker system that was approved. And as I go down towards Anderson Lane, which is the south portion of the project, the green live roof over the new showroom building is supposed to be eliminated, as well as the large enclosed parking garage, which extended up to Anderson Lane. So, those were the big eliminations of the amendment. And in its place, what we're proposing in lieu of the elimination of the parking garage is going to be an open-air parking lot, per se, in the same location as where the garage was. In the back, behind the service booth building where the car stackers were, is this going to remain as it is today with concrete parking. And the other addition is two generators, one for each building, emergency standby generators, and a propane tank, which will serve for the heat and cooling for both buildings. As we go through, as we went through your board and submissions through some of your consultants, stormwater, lighting, and landscaping has been revised accordingly with regards to these changes, and I believe have been pretty much satisfied by your engineering consultant. And also, I wanted to add, too, is that this amendment, although it eliminated some of the variances that were sought previously, we did seek variances from the town zoning board on appeal that eliminated some variances, reduced it some, and also sought variances that were created by eliminating some of these things. So, that's also things that we have done. And Chris Pall, the project architect, could briefly go through some of the architecture. But we did receive a card approval as well, recommendation for approval. Recently, as another update, we did finally receive Westchester County Department of Health approval for the water treatment and also for onsite sewage disposal. So, we have now Westchester County Department of Health. The stormwater pollution prevention plan, revised plan, has been submitted to DEP and NYSC. And both have no objections to the revisions that were made to the report. And also, I think I did provide to Kirsten a while ago that we did get some correspondence from the Golden's Bridge Fire Commission, saying that they have reviewed the latest set of plans and have no comments at this time.
Yes, I remember seeing that. Okay.
Now, I would just ask Chris Pall, if you could just quickly go through--
Chris Pall, from Sullivan Architecture in White Plains, New York. What the elevations there simply show are the previously approved elevations from the original site plan approval back in 2019, and our new elevations down on the bottom of the page, which is part of the current application, simply showing that the south parking structure has been removed. You can see that here on this elevation. So, this was the front of the building. This is now the front of the building without the parking structure to the south, which is now a surface parking lot. Additionally, the Mercedes-Benz corporate entity has changed design-wise. So, we've incorporated those changes into the architecture now as we present here. And I'm sure you can all see the construction has begun, the steel framing begun actually this week. The footprints of the building haven't changed, so the construction that you see now is what was originally permitted per the original site plan approval back in 2019. So, the footprints of the showroom building and the service building have not changed at all. The only real difference is the removal of the enclosed parking structure.
Just point out the new slowly elevation that was now exposed by reason of removal of the garage.
Sure. The south elevation, which was much closer to Anderson Hill Road, which would be the end of the parking structure, has now been replaced with the end of the building, which is now further north on the site. We were also able to remove an enclosed trash enclosure, which was designed to be collected at Anderson Hill Road, and now internalize that into the building. So, that's been removed from the site altogether and internalized.
Okay. And I think the other thing that we've been told is that although the green wall that was on the garage is gone, much of the landscaping is still going to be along the area where the garage had been, so the cars should be screened by that landscaping.
That's correct. The previous approval had both a green wall, which would be actually growing on the building, if you will, on the parking structure. Now that the parking structure is gone, we retain the site landscaping along Green Street, which you can see here, and that will act as a buffer to the car parking on the surface.
Great. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
With regard to the generator, where is that going to be? Is that meeting the setbacks?
Actually, there's two generators, which I hadn't realized before. I thought there was only one.
So, the generators, as you can see here, are going to be located pretty much in between the existing showroom building now and the existing service booth.
Okay. And those are--
But behind them.
And they fall well within the setbacks?
Yes, they do.
What about the storage tank? What size storage tank is it going to be for the propane?
The propane tank is 30,000 gallon propane tank.
How large?
30,000 gallons.
30,000 gallons.
Big.
So--
That was also made available to the fire department as well, so I didn't meet with Mr. Malo.
Right. But there are some, I think the code maybe speaks to that, too. Whereabouts is that? Where are they going to be buried?
It's square in the middle of 22 buildings.
Right next to the generator?
It's way in from any property lot. It's on the right-hand side of the driveways or going up to the new parking lot.
It'd be on the east side of that.
Correct, correct. And then you have the big rock out cropping behind it.
And it, correct, it's buried or above ground?
It's above ground.
It's above ground?
Okay. Any questions from the board? Okay. We have--
I'm sorry, actually, is there any screening? I don't see any planting, is there any planting screening proposed for that?
Sure. The proposed screening for actually both generators and the propane tank, they're all on solid rock, is we're proposing fencing. So, I mean, we did, I think we also show, if I'm not mistaken, on the landscape plan, you can always put some things in pots, too, for seasonal, but right now, it's, it was all hammered rock out of there, so propose fencing.
Thank you.
We have people from--
Lisa DeCarlo-- Emerald Bloom. Good evening. Lisa DeCarlo, Emerald Bloom. My husband and I own the 15 Anderson Lane. We have two buildings where the veterinary hospital is, and then the old parsonage. And nobody is happier than we are with the new site plans. My current cause for concern is what's going on on Green Street right now. The road is narrower than it's proposed to be 15 feet. It's very difficult to get two cars by there. The current storm frames are uneven. We don't have a stop sign at the end. And I stood, and I was very happy with all of the greenery that was going to be planted But it makes sightline to the corner very difficult. People come shooting from one end or into it. And we've had several near collisions, either from clients or construction workers coming in and out. And it hasn't been pretty. Some of our clients are very vocal, and they've actually gotten into arguments with the truckers who are coming in and out of that road. So, I don't know if this is the proper forum to address that, but since we got the letter, I figured that if you can't help, you might at least be able to direct us to the proper forum to have these issues addressed. It was, I mean, we've been there more than 20 years. It was okay. We didn't have a stop sign at the end, but when there is no traffic control devices, it's a free-for-all. And trying to conduct business across from a major construction site has been very, very challenging and definitely has had some negative impact for our business, but we hope that it elevates the neighborhood overall. But I was hoping that maybe we could get some support, to have somebody to go out and take a look. I mean, we have uneven road now, and I know it'll eventually be fixed, but that's a time off and there's some pretty ugly stuff that's happening right now. So, again, if there's a different forum, then I should address this in, if you could tell me where that might be.
Okay.
I have no other issues with anything.
Great.
And I'm the one who's blocked for all the greenery on the side of the parking lot. And now, I remember when that house used to be there, when the tree was in full bloom or all the hedges, you couldn't see around, but we could call the nivver and say, hey, the hedges have to be cut, and that was an easy deal. Now, not so much.
Okay. So, sightline is us.
Okay.
That's within our realm. Stop sign and width of the road, unless there's some construction that's happening in the road, is there--
So, right now, the edge of the road is what I would call the mafia blocks.
The what?
I would call mafia blocks, the concrete barrier blocks or the jersey barrier blocks.
Jersey, okay.
To just secure that anybody doesn't drive into the site. That's what I requested them to have, because there is an extreme drop-off during the time of construction, we didn't want to have an accident. Cash basins are set up high at the moment, just because needs to be paved again, and that's the, cash basin and drainage height is the finish height.
Height.
And they're not at that stage yet. Stop sign is, I think, a town requirement on the developer.
Stop sign is town, yeah. Unless it was originally there and not knocked down.
No, we never had.
Okay. So, you kind of, I think probably, can they, maybe if you talk--
Does the sign come from the highway department?
I would talk, you guys can set me straight. I would go to the highway department, ask for two things. One is stop sign. They might have to go to the town to get that, but I don't know what's in there. And if they're really, I've seen some, like, if that's going to last for a while before they pave, which it might, I've seen sort of where they put little, you know, asphalt up--
Asphalt aprons.
Little temporary aprons around, and I don't know whether that is--
Because people can see it now.
I'm in that area tomorrow. I can take a look at that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. And so, the sightline, your concern, just so we know, is when you're coming--
When all those pretty trees get grown, it affects if you're--
If you're coming out? If you're coming out?
Yeah, if you're coming out here, you don't see to the corner. You can't see the traffic coming this way, and lots of people, they make this quick turn, they never stop at the end to exit, and it's gotten a little dicey there.
Maybe a place where they need stop signs, then.
Yeah, I mean, maybe...
Letter to the highway department, and you'll go and take a look, too. Thank you.
Yeah, and letter or a call or email, I think it's highway@lewisboro, NY.gov?
There was never a stop sign at the end of Green Street?
Never.
No.
So...
No, before all this, I mean, it was very quiet back there. It wasn't a lot of traffic, but now increased traffic, people aren't always polite.
And I, it does seem like people cut corners everywhere, but if there's no sight, no visibility...
It's going to be substantial screening there, so you're not going to be able to look at most of it.
Yeah, so then signage, you know, signage, traffic direction become much more important.
So, okay, so we're going to hand that to Jan to look at the site piece, and I think...
Should an email to the highway department? Thank you.
Okay.
Easy.
Anybody else have any comments? Any other members of the public? So we now have, could you maybe discuss the ZBA and the NEGDEC issue for us?
Yeah, well, so we conducted a coordinated review. As we were circulating or before we established, we'd already status and adopted the NEGDEC, the ZBA considered the variances, took a vote. Until this afternoon, we did not have a memorialization of what the ZBA did. We now have a ZBA determination dated today or signed by the ZBA chair today. However, it reflects a date of consideration and adoption that predates our NEGDEC.
Right.
They treat it as type two. So I would say in a perfect world, we would have the ZBA go back and basically reaffirm or re-adopt in the, you know, in the wake of the NEGDEC.
And the lead, yeah, lead agency NEGDEC.
Lead agency NEGDEC. So I, it's kind of a fine, it's kind of a fine point, but it's a, you know, it's a secret process at the point.
I understand, and that's why the zoning board delayed officially issuing a resolution until today.
So I, my, I guess my take on this is I view it as a potential secret hiccup. I really kind of leave it to the applicant as to how comfortable the applicant is if they are, you know, our, we have a resolution that's drafted and it just has a dated, a decision dated, and we now have a decision that's dated to August 20th?
We have a resolution that's...
Yeah, we have a resolution, well, right, resolution dated and signed by the ZBA chair as of today.
On behalf of the advocate, we don't see it as a real hiccup. I believe the town attorney advised the zoning board to hold off on adopting resolutions, so they were following their own town council, and we'd like to move forward with your action tonight.
Yeah, so that's the exact thing. They adopted the resolution before, at a meeting that happened before the NEGDEC was, but they signed the resolution today, so...
No, they didn't adopt the resolution at the meeting. They took a vote on the merits of the variance, and they knowingly delayed turning it into a resolution and deferred to the town attorney, who I believe drafted that resolution, which isn't usually the case with zoning boards.
Okay, I mean, but it is. If you guys are comfortable...
My view is if the applicant's comfortable in light of, yeah, then I, I'll defer to the judgment of the applicant.
Well, that's our preference, because there'll be no difference in the result, and it's just going to be...
Right, going back again.
... wasting their time, the zoning board's time, our time, your time.
I absolutely agree. I just don't want to end up, so if it's on you, I'm much happier. And you guys are okay with this?
I am.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
I'll correct the resolution to fill in the blank. Send it to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Public hearing first.
Yes, right, so I'm like, okay, is there, so nobody else has anything to say, and we've got this, and we're okay, no more questions for, all right, so...
You want a motion? I'll make a motion. We close the Mercedes-Benz public hearing.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion?
Nope.
We got a question.
I'm confused, which, this is finishing up on Mercedes.
Mercedes Benz.
Okay.
Yeah, they, there's some, there was some question because the ZBA, the timing was originally out of sync. We now have a document that we can, that the applicant is happy moving forward with, from the ZBA.
Are you okay?
Yeah.
I am. I, like I said, it's kind of a paperwork, timing issue. If the, it doesn't, and if we were to send this back to the ZBA, not that it would be an unnecessary or empty exercise, but we now know where the ZBA stands, so in this instance, if the applicant's comfortable, I'm comfortable.
And you are?
I am, yes.
You're out, your client is, okay.
Yeah, it's, there would be no difference in the end result.
Yeah, we know.
The end result would be the same, so it's just a little bit of a paperwork thing, so, okay. So, is that a satisfactory question?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's closing the public hearing. We now have a resolution that will be amended for the date. So do you want to quickly run through the resolution?
Sure, it's an amended site development plan approval and amended town storm order permit for the amendments to the plan, which were articulated by the applicant's presentation. The planning board did declare Service Lead Agency, issued the negative declaration on July 16th. Resolution makes reference to the revised SWIP, the fact that the SWIP's been reviewed by the DEP and has been accepted. Will revise the whereas clause to improve the date of the ZBA resolution, which is today, and the opening and closing of the public hearing was today, August 20th. The entire set of plans has been revised and is identified in the resolution. There's really no, they've addressed all of our comments, so there's no revisions needed to those plans. You can submit my, ours when you're ready, and that's, you know, makes reference to all other prior conditions of any previous resolution and the timeframes that are articulated in those resolutions continue to apply, so nothing modified.
So if there aren't any questions for Jan, I'd look for a motion to adopt the resolution that's just been described.
I'll make a motion.
Paul.
I'll second.
Bruce seconds. Oops, I better write that down, because I'm going to have to do this one. Okay, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the motion is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so, yeah, I think we're set now, right?
John?
I'm sorry?
No.
Paul, Paul made the motion, and Bruce seconded it. Okay, and the next item on our agenda is another public hearing that we will open tonight. It's calendar number 18-22 PB. This is Bichon LLC, 876 Route 35 in Cross River, New York. This is an application for change of use from residential to commercial professional offices and outdoor parking of three flatbed trucks. So after going to the ZBA, this did return to us in July, and so we now will have a public hearing. So let me ask if there's anyone here that is interested, is here because of this public hearing, and if so, would you please, if you want to speak on this, could you sign up on the, with Kirsten? Okay, so it doesn't look like there's anyone here, so you can probably do a pretty brief overview?
Yes. Patrick Prok, the project architect, give us the short version.
As you mentioned, the property is being converted in use from a residential to a commercial zone, into a commercial use. It's located behind Sals on 35. This building here, there is no proposed renovation or exterior additions or renovations to the building itself. What's been done on the site, there's been a fence added on the property line behind Sals, and we're proposing the removal of some of the cabin within the 50-foot DC buffer Turned back landscape architect, prepared a mitigation plan for that area, it's been submitted.
So there's no new invertable surfaces or incursions into the buffer? In fact, we were eliminating the existing gravel area that's closest to the wetlands, so that we're a minimum of 50 feet away from the, from the wetland buffer, within the wetland buffer. So we're not proposing any real changes to the site. There is existing gravel around the north side and the west side of the, of the structure, which gives access to a propane tank in the north side, and we're proposing to use the west side as a spot for two parking, parking two cars. We don't know exactly what our tendency is going to be in the main part of the building, but if it's a, if it's a tendency that invites customers or clients onto the site, you know, we're going to need the spaces or the five that we're showing for that people to use.
Five is the minimum.
Five is the minimum, and we're showing eight. Correct.
All right.
Also, did the board do, or some of the members do a site walk last weekend?
Not here. So I did not understand, maybe you could clarify, the truck, I know you provided some turning ratios, but I cannot, couldn't, will the trucks be backing out onto the 35? What is actually happening when...
They're not backing onto 35. If you walk and describe how the trucks get in and out, just pull.
They're going to pull it forward, and then they're going to back up into the spot. As I showed.
Do they do the turnaround when they come in?
They do the turnaround and they're walking. Plenty of room.
So those are, I missed that they were backed into those spots there.
We're showing the front end right now, but if you back to the rear, just need to show back.
So they're going to, so will they pull, do you have to pull next to the building in order to back in?
Can you run through the illustrations there and show us a truck coming in? Because I think you have it marked out, actually.
We could either pull in like this, and then just turn around and back up.
Okay.
Or if we wanted to, we could pull in over here and then back up.
Okay, that's one of the parking spaces or not?
These are the parking spaces at the end of that line. So the beginning line is available for the trucks.
Because one of the things that, as I looked at this, I was kind of, those are really, you know, if we could shorten, so, again, the objective is always to get as much away from the wetland as possible. So I was thinking that some of those parking spaces that go way deep along the sides of the building could be, you know, shortened up.
All these spaces are beyond, beyond the 50-foot buffer line.
Yeah, it's 150 foot.
50 feet is kind of like an arbitrary number. It's the trigger on a residential project to come to the planning board if you're over 600 square feet, but the buffer's 150. So the 50 really doesn't have any regulatory meaning in a case like this.
Right, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out if we could pull things further away from the wetland, especially if there are things like cars that might be, you know, in the winter have salt on them, have oil drips, I don't know, you know, so I was kind of wondering...
Bring these two spots north to like be...
Wait, that's not, that's not north.
I'm sorry, bring them south to...
We're showing those beyond the water line.
Line up your parking, so it's just a roll.
The front end of the building.
Just one of the, you know, the...
We had the same, same.
Yeah, we don't get to see, see things that can be done near wetlands that often, and so to try to figure out...
We can take a look at trying to pull them up for some more distance from the, it's just a question of then do we, do we make it more difficult for the trucks to turn around?
Right, that's part of why I wanted to understand a little bit more.
We'll explore that.
Okay, I think when you were here last time, we talked about the fence between this property and Cameron's, and whether that was actually Cameron's fence or on your, on this property, was there any success?
We didn't get any response from the new owners of the Cameron's building, but our view is we're showing a new fence on our side, and they have a terribly determined fence on their side. Once our new fence goes up, if they want to pull down theirs, that's fine by us, we can't control what they do.
And is your fence going to be the same kind of wooden one that went around the back of Sals?
Yes, so wood stockade fence, Patrick had it.
The plan showed a chain link fence with...
The chain link fence with screen.
With the screen on it.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
The stockade fence would be...
The stockade fence would be, I think, an improvement, yeah. That's exactly the right word.
That's what we're going to, that's what's going around Sals.
Yeah, so do you continue that along your common boundary?
I mean, why didn't Cameron's have to... I mean, do we need two fences?
No, but their fence is in terrible shape.
Well, we weren't sure whether that's theirs or yours.
We proposed a fence.
And you...
Yeah, we, because it was up.
It is, and it's also...
The last time we were here, you said it didn't make sense to put two fences.
I don't think it makes sense to put two fences. That's why, I think the hope was that you guys would work together to put one fence on the property line, and that we don't.
I went in there, I don't want there's nobody there to talk to this. Let's wait for them to matter.
We, I think we're leaning now towards a stockade fence, and we'll give it another shot at reaching out to the owners next door.
And, I mean, I think it's, I think their, that fence is, has a short life, you know, I mean, it looks pretty bad, so if you put one up, it would be an improvement.
And we're just talking about fencing the area where up to the 50-foot, that back line.
I mean, the service station doesn't have a fence. The shelter station, I mean, it's all open. It's terrible.
And also, when Cameron's got their permit to put the parking lot that goes all the way back down deep towards the wetlands, and there was a residence at that point, why didn't Cameron's have to put in a screen fence? You know, like, that was allowed, you know, there's like no fence, you know, requirement for Cameron's when they have a parking lot and the deli, tons of parts.
We didn't, we didn't require a fence, by the way, if I remember.
Susan, we're telling you.
Am I...
And do you have an address for that?
We didn't request the fence.
No.
So if you don't want to put a fence, don't put a fence.
Okay.
Well, we might, the problem is that whatever is there is sort of dilapidated, and I think it's falling onto your property, so I don't know. I mean, we're just...
The part that's falling is further back.
The service shows that...
Without the fence, there wouldn't be any screening of the trucks from Cameron's.
It's on Sals.
Be careful.
Oh, I see.
Maybe they'll fix their fence.
I don't know.
The service shows that...
I mean, I... I mean, I, so anyway, you guys proposed it.
And we can't solve the common fence between Sal's and Cameron's.
No.
Which is the one you see driving on 35.
I know. I, I just.
What about for snow removal? You got any problems there?
No, they do their own snow.
Well, when I say problems, I'm, I'm talking about the practicality of, in Cameron's, I don't know how much they, they push going, you know, going west.
Toward you.
Okay? But you put a lot of snow up against a fence, something's going to give, okay? And it doesn't help to maintaining a fence. But I, I actually was remembering that you were going to talk with them and get this resolved.
Yeah, I went there.
Yeah. We'll try again.
You tried, and they?
They're just like, it's just work.
It's an option to.
Look, if you could reach out in a letter or something and try to get this to the commission.
We'll give it another go.
Michael, I know the owner will be there on Tuesday at 2:00, because I have a meeting with him.
Oh, okay.
On a different map, I put that.
Paul, you want to make, put that on the calendar?
Soon as they?
Tuesday at 2:00.
Well, you might want to get there a little.
Sorry. Well, Michael, let me communicate it.
Oh. And then Jan's memo raises some, has asked some questions, which I think Patrick now has some fast answers to. You want to just go through that, or would you rather us do it and write it? Or we could do both?
Both would be good.
I just wanted to preface the memo with, I know the application's been before the board on a couple of occasions, but we had deferred any site plan comments until we knew we had a legal use. So as I said, it has appeared on your agenda, this is our first crack at the site plan, because we just recently got the determination from, from the ZVA.
Right.
So we hadn't previously reviewed. But I'm happy, you want to go here, or you want to go?
Why don't you start, and then he can?
You can give the answer.
Okay. So identified, this has a type 2 action member CPRO. The approvals required are site plan, approval, wetland activity permit from the planning board. The, it's unknown whether D.C. wetland permit is required for the removal of a macadam. I was copied on an email from Jerry Barrett to the D.C. asking them for determination on that. I haven't seen a response.
They will require.
What's that?
They will require.
Oh, yeah? They got back to you? What's that?
Yes, they will require.
Okay.
The D.C. process.
Okay. I hadn't seen that. Okay, so it needs D.C.
And Jerry Barrett's already been opened up discussion.
Okay. The D.C. has confirmed the wetland line, I saw the validation block on the plan. Does require a referral to Rochester County Planning Board, I'm sure if that's taken place yet, would be notification only.
I want to say yes, but I have to double check.
Okay. I don't suspect that the project would go over 5,000 square feet of disturbance, but if it does, it would require a SWIP. We were, we recommended referral to the building inspector for review of the site plan. I know that the building inspector reviewed it for the use, made the determination once at the ZVA, but there's some zoning information on the site plan that will need to be reviewed, including the landscape buffers.
Landscape buffer, which we're seeing, you can show, same as the site.
Okay, if you could just label it as a landscaping buffer, zoning and landscaping buffer. The determination will need to be made at some point as to whether, when the asphalt or gravel surfaces, when they went in, did they predate the zoning? Is it existing, in a existing condition? And exempt from the buffer provisions, or was it installed sometime during, when this provision was in existence?
About 25 years ago, we did it.
Sal's did it, okay. So I'll have to look, look to see if this is an existing non-conforming condition. We did visit the property last week. The, the truck parking area sits a bit higher than the wetland, it was obviously filled at some point in time, many years ago. The, from the edge of the pavement down to the wetland and including the wetland is completely dominated by invasive plant species. We recommended that, in addition to, you know, removing and replanting that asphalt area, that they do some invasive species removal on the slope going down to, to the wetland. And around the periphery of the parking lot is also inundated with invasives. We recommended some larger boulders and placing the boulders at a little bit higher frequency just to prevent approachment into the wetland buffer.
Excuse me, was that Jan, what you're showing there?
Yeah. Unless, unless there was a revised plan since my memo.
No.
Okay. He's also showing some boulders on the other, on the other side of the removal area, which would be closer to the one, but probably not needed. If you just line the boulders right along the edge of the gravel, I think that would, that would suffice.
Yeah, I was looking at that thinking, you know, I'm not sure how big the boulders are compared to the trucks, but, but it seemed like, I was, you know, I was even thinking bollards, but if, I think boulders would look nicer if you could put them.
So they're just going to be big enough?
Yeah, big enough to, if somebody's backing a truck in, that they're not going to go right over them.
Paul used boulders before the fence went up between him and Sal, so we don't have a problem with re-lining the boulders.
Good. Yeah, just.
If you're showing boulders, who will you say?
Yeah.
The property, I asked the applicant to clarify whether the property's in the DEP designated Main Street area. I believe it is, but you'd need to confirm with the DEP. The only thing there that would be, that would trigger additional review or permitting by the DEP is if you were adding a new impervious surface. And I think the only area where you might be doing that is where you're creating your ADA accessible parking spaces. So if, if that area now is gravel on your proposing pavement, that, that's actually prohibited, prohibited by the DEP unless you prepare a SWIP. So that, you're going to have to work out.
Fairly true.
So first, I would confirm, the mapping I have shows it in this designated Main Street area. Bacio's is in it, they dealt with the same thing. And then if you are, how are you going to deal with the accessible spaces? There may be an avenue for an accept, an acceptable surface that's deemed pervious by the DEP, DEP, but also meets ADA, you just have to go through those scenarios. There's no topography shown on the plan, we just want to, yeah, get the county topo just so you can, you know, demonstrate how drainage works. There may be an opportunity to, to improve some water quality. There appears to be a swell or drainage ditch between the edge of, what's it, the building, like that little green space right in there that goes down to the wetland. I'd imagine the water comes down off the, the parking area, it's directed towards that swell into the wetland, so maybe you can do a water quality swell or something, just improve some water quality for the runoff coming off the driveway. We had the same comment about potentially reducing the depth of the gravel parking spaces if that didn't hinder the truck turning. There's some new, the new stockade fencing that was installed doesn't show on the plan, so that's just illustrating that as an existing condition. There's a PVC vent pipe in the vicinity of the proposed accessible parking spaces that should be shown if that needs to remain.
That's for the fresh water.
For the, oh, that's for the fresh water?
Yeah, because they truck the water in. Don't forget, Sal's polluted the whole area.
Oh, no, I don't, so that's a water tank under there?
Yeah.
Because I thought you were on bottled water.
Oh, they, they tank, they truck it in.
They truck it in.
Oh, they truck in bottled water and put it in the tank, and that's the vent for the tank?
Yeah.
So the only question on that is, is it going to hinder your accessible parking spaces?
And if it's just up there, does it need protection so that nobody runs into it?
Some clarification on the truck maneuvering diagrams. Just clarification on what, some, you know, what's gravel, what's pavement, what's old pavement? What, what do you plan on doing if you're going to repave it all, just because of restrictions with the DEP?
I'm just, the crews in the cabin, the shade areas.
Okay, do you plan on repaving that at all?
Again, the only place would be in here where the ADA spot would be.
So the, the purple area which you're indicating is existing macadam, I don't disagree, it's got some gravel on top of it, but it seems like it was paved at one point in time. That's not going to get repaved at all, this is going to stay as it is? You don't have to, just ask.
The purple areas.
Yeah, we're not going to pave it.
Not going to pave it, okay.
Not going to repave it.
Not going to repave it, okay. There's some, some floodlights on the property that should probably be replaced with downward facing lights. And do you need a dumpster?
No, we don't need a dumpster. No.
And that's private car, it's up there. Okay. And I saw the, almost like a rescue window in the back for a basement, is there?
Just mechanical space.
Just mechanical space, okay.
And it's only accessible from outside, you can't get to the basement from inside the building.
Oh, really? Okay. Even in it on the plan, that the basement's mechanical.
Okay, so one of the things that is, was mentioned was a referral to the building inspector, so we can do that by consensus, right? We all agree?
Yes.
If I sign this, do you need it, or can I just give it to Kevin?
I would love it back to make it count.
I didn't know whether you had two of them here for me to sign twice. Okay. So again, I didn't hear anybody in the public that had a comment to make about this? Did you, you sort of responded as you went through some of them, do you have any more comments to respond to the memo? Okay.
No. We'd like to close the public hearing. Public comment.
Well, so, is there any reason, I'm just making sure that there's, we don't have,
we have nothing to refer to the ZVA, well, we don't have the building inspector review, but we assume that site compliance, or should we wait for that?
We're not proposing any new buildings, or structures, or expansion of the building.
We just have to, we need to clarify about the 50-foot courses.
Well, I think the, the only question, I'll leave it up for his, there could be a potential issue with the landscape buffer, possibly.
I have no problem with him reviewing it and giving a memo, but I don't think that should hold up closing the public hearing.
I don't, I don't know that it should, I'm not saying that it's only compliant.
So I guess it would be okay to close.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we, we've opened it, and I think the prospect of significant plan change is fairly modest.
Right.
I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing.
So Jan moved. Bruce seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Do you think you have enough information to draft a resolution? We, we need to find out a little bit more about the ADA, the fence, the, I don't know.
We can have answers to that.
You get answers?
Couple of weeks.
All right. So I guess we can ask for?
I'd imagine there'd be some sort of resubmission, and that's what the resolution.
Yeah, resub, okay. And then we'll, we'll look at the resubmission and then?
Then we can do a resolution.
And do the resolution? I mean, review the resolution if it's okay?
Yeah, if there's a, would you like a resolution prepared for your next, I don't, at one point, I talked about having a resolution for tonight, and then we?
Yeah, decided that wasn't really possible.
Had, reviewed the application, so I'm happy to prepare it based on what comes in, and then?
Right. So, I, I would like, I mean, I'm, so, in, some of the things that are in Jan's memo that resonate with me are, you know, if you could look at some of the invasives that are around and perhaps, you know, there's, perhaps there's a way to do that without a lot of extra, you know, I don't know whether there are things that can be done to keep the invasives from coming back if you actually remove them, that would be useful.
Jerry Barrett can review that as his plan.
I'm sorry?
Jerry Barrett can review that as his plan.
Right. Great. I hadn't realized that I, it looked from the picture like that pipe wasn't protected. I'm a little bit worried if that's a.
Located and make it work.
Yeah. Anybody else have any comments that we want to make sure gets, come back in the next submission?
I think that just investigating the parking and pulling it away from the wetlands is a good thought by both of you, to see what options are available. And then you're saying, so if zoning analyzes that, the driveway is not pre-existing to the code, then it needs to meet the landscape buffer, or they need a variance to allow the paving within the landscape buffer?
I think you might be able to waive it. Right?
Yeah.
So you'd have, I think, the option from recollecting the code correctly. If it's determined that it, it needs to comply, you could potentially grant a waiver. If you're not inclined to grant the waiver, it would go to the ZVA. I think that's how it's worked in the past. But I think you have the right, you have the ability, the code provides the ability to waive just the landscape buffer requirements.
Okay.
And I think it also talks about that fences can replace buffer in some instances, up to, to be determined by the planning board, so if there was a fence, I'm assuming that the buffer, the landscape buffer was meant for screening.
For screening.
So if you can't screen, and you could put up a fence that would seem attractive, then looks the proposing along that property. I'm, I'm really thinking about the property line between Cameron's.
Right.
And then, right? Where the pavement's up against the property, they're actually pulling it back because it's over the property line? Yeah, they're actually pulling it back. So if there's a fence there, maybe that helps.
Which was proposed, so, yeah, and, and that, that serves the purpose of screening. Okay.
So we were confident we can address these with a very short time and give Jan at least two weeks before the next meeting to prepare a resolution based upon our update and revision.
Great. Okay.
Resolution for the September meeting.
Yes. Okay. Great.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, because we lost some time with the zoning board.
Yep. Next item, next item on our agenda is an extension of time request from calendar number 03-13 PB, calendar number 03-16 WP, calendar number 19-21 SW. This is Silver Mine Preserve on Silver Mine Drive and Lockwood Road, and it's a request for two 90-day extensions of time to the resolution granting final subdivision plat approval, wetland activity and stormwater permits. So we did get a letter from Jerry that sort of talked about where they were.
Yes, and I spoke to Jerry, communicated with Jerry before the meeting, indicated, in light of her letter, I didn't think it was necessary for it to come tonight. I can report that, you know, progress continues to be made by the applicant towards condition satisfaction, including the submission to me of all the HOA documentation, which I've gone through and have given comments back to Jerry. We have a plat that we're reviewing, so, you know, I, no significant change in circumstances. I, you know, I have no problem granting the requested honor, maybe this.
And, yeah, and you?
No, we're actively inspecting the site weekly, there's no issue.
Okay. So I'd look for a motion to extend the, to approve the extension of time request for 180 days. Bruce moves.
I'll second.
Jan seconds. Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, well, has been extended to?
I'm speaking for you.
February 14, 2025. Okay. Next item on our agenda is another extension of time request, is calendar number 08-14 PB, calendar number 95-14 WP, calendar number 20-14 SW. This is Golden Bridge Village Center, New York State Route 22, Golden Bridge, New York, and it's an application, or another application for an extension of time. So, on this one, we had asked, this had been approved. So, on this one, we had asked, this had been approved at some point, it's been extended a number of times. It's an open construction site. We did ask for a plan by July, allow, so...
Good evening, everybody. Yes, I'm here to, I guess, to explain that. You received the letter, and I'd like to read what Mr. Site, which is the owner, I presented the owner, what he wrote and what he wanted me to convey or read to, to you. That this actually, nothing has been going on for a series of things. Okay, and then he wrote, okay, accordingly, this approval took place just before COVID, it's an office building. The site work was done upfront to keep the approval alive at cost of owner half a million dollar. Number three, COVID changed the way we owned the business, we learned to work from home. Four, the need of office space disappeared. Five, we brought in new, a new use daycare. However, COVID impacted the older since parents could stay home with their children. We had to wait until now to return to office use, and we think we have found a use that will fit the already approved site plan. We request a year extension of this site plan. We have secured financing to build this building. If it does require minor use change, there are between the RB zone, this is a minor challenge versus starting all over again, which was set back years. The 40-years-old developer dedicated to work with the community in generous way to provide the much-needed ambulance center with top community services to the town of Lewisburg that we cannot be proud of.
Right, so we did...
A show of faith is needed from the planning board.
Okay.
That's why, now, I can tell you on my side that for what has been going on, okay, that we do like to build the office building now, okay? And as soon as we have the extension, by the end of the year, the latest, okay, we will present a full set of plans for approval and a potential building permit for the office building. Everything is going to stay the way it was. The footprint of the building will be exactly the same. Now, probably the facade is going to be some changes, some minor changes, but it's going to be sitting exactly where it was approved originally, with the same footprint, the same square footage, the same everything.
But you even said that you're probably going to have to give us a new set of plans. I mean, this has been...
For the building, for the building.
Right.
In order to obtain a building permit, I'm sure they and I know, I mean, to have to provide a certification. Am I correct, Jan?
Okay, so I'm, I'm really sympathetic, but it's been years that we've had sort of an open construction site sitting there for the neighbors to see. And I know COVID was a problem, but I, I don't know. I mean, I'm, I don't think there's much that changes if you come back with another set of plans, because you're going to have to, you're going to have to come back with a set of plans anyhow, right?
Unless you want to give me the building permit without the set of plans, I mean, I'll accept that too.
I don't think that's...
So now you understand what you're saying. If the building, excuse me, if we were to start a construction, which I wasn't part of that being for, by the presence of builders and developers, for only 40 years, okay? The building would have been half done, maybe the walls would have been done, and then everything would have stopped. So you would have had an eyesore standing there, which is not the most attractive things that I ever seen.
And what...
And that's why everything stopped.
Right.
Everything stopped. Now we are ready to begin construction and finishing.
Okay. I feel like I've heard that before, and I feel like it is an open construction, it's just not construction, it's just disturbed ground, I mean, I don't...
The work that was done was done in lieu of the site plan.
Yeah.
It was requested a site plan to do the work. Am I correct?
To, to try to stabilize the site a little bit.
Some effort to stabilize the construction site after, after they, they pulled out from the project, and then to fence it for security purposes.
Right.
Do you, do you have a, who's the user? What type of use you propose a?
Office is doctor's.
Doctor's office?
Yes.
So the, the building might, footprint might not change, but you might have changes in water and sewer flow rates.
Well, according to...
And parking.
According to the preliminary information that I have through the engineer, okay, that the sewer capacity is there, it's not going to increase. If anything, might be decrease a little bit, okay? But everything else is going to be done according to...
Right.
Generic office, and then you go to medical office, it's a higher rate.
Right. And I'm, I mean, and you're saying according to the information you have, but that's information you have that you haven't shared with us. So I feel, I, I don't understand...
We have a site plan that was approved for a daycare and office. The daycare is no longer in play. I, I don't know what you're...
Would have to, either way, you're amending the application.
You're going to have to come back, yeah.
It's going to be the same thing. You're going to have to amend the application, whether they grant the extension or not. It's going to be the same exact process. You're going to submit a new, a new application for the amendment because you have a different user, and you're going to submit a set of plans.
But the building is going to be the same, it's going to be the same building, it was same square, square footage.
Your site outside the building might change to accommodate that particular user. You might have a different parking department, because...
You're not going to have the school bus trapoff that you have to pull through, or playground, I mean...
On the H2, it's going to be...
Right, so, but that's what this board reviews. So you're going to, you're going to have to revise the application and the plan unless you bring back a daycare and an office building. So, you're not, you're not, if the, if the board decides not to grant, and I'm not saying that with them, but if they decided not to grant the extension, it's not going to change or delay you in any way, because you're going to come back with the application and a revised set of plans. It's really not, it doesn't, preserving this approval, knowing that you're going to have a different end user, it really isn't necessary, it's not necessary.
Doesn't do you any good.
It doesn't really do you any...
It doesn't do any good. So now what you're saying, if I understand correct, I have to provide the plans with, with a deep, a different site plan?
Oh, yeah.
Now I want to go over it again?
Oh, absolutely, so you have to come back.
If you, if you...
Unless you come back with a daycare, the site plan, all the data and all, all the information that's updated to that new user, you're going to have a different traffic scenario, parking, maybe water and sewer. There's going to be some, you're not going to have a playground, so that's going to become something else. They're going to want to know what that's going to, you know, so you're going to have a different site plan.
Playground, no.
No.
Unless the doctor want a playground.
Yeah, so you're not, you know, that's going to be a different area, maybe there, it's going to be more parking, we don't know.
I, I just don't think at this point, unless you're doing exactly the application that you gave before, which was daycare, which you explained is, you know, not really as much in demand anymore.
Right.
And unless, you know, then, then there's no real advantage to continuing to carry this forward. So, I don't know, did, I, do...
I agree with you, I agree with you. It, it doesn't make any sense.
It doesn't, it doesn't make sense. We've been carrying it, and, and we've kind of all come to the conclusion that it's not going to be, it's very unlikely that a daycare would come back in. And so if you're going to change it, might as well just do it.
You also remember, I'm just thinking about this more, there was a short, there's a shortfall of parking on, on the site. You had to do the parking utilization study, the land bank spaces or wave spaces. That's all dependent on hours of operation. The medical office is going to have different hours of operation than relied upon on the child daycare. So all of these different supplemental reports are going to get updated to reflect a new use. So it's really, I don't think it, it help, it doesn't help you much.
It will, no.
Yep. So, I don't know, I mean, I think it's, what do you, I think I'm getting the consensus of the board to, to not grant an extension, do you?
No.
I, once something gets started, I have a hard time saying you've got to stop, okay? Were there any variances in this?
No, not many.
I think only the parking, that wasn't a ZBA variance, that was our, our variance to say, to say not all the parking.
And they, they have a building permit?
No.
How did they get to do the site?
They got a building permit, but it's, I would imagine, it's expired.
It's expired.
Yeah, yeah. They got a, they got a building permit for the site work only.
Okay, right.
Right, if I'm remembering correctly? But the building permit expired, and now they've been trying, they've been preserving their site plan.
So now you can't get a permit because there's no extent, there wouldn't be any extension, so...
Right, they'd have to come back with new plans.
The only way he, he could apply for a building permit if he was building the same exact thing.
Yeah.
Which we know is not the case.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm understanding the logic that you've just heard better than I am. I'm having a harder time seeing you get these extensions and to what, you know, to what purpose.
So do we just sort of decline to make any action? Yeah, we don't have to take a motion to anything. Yeah, I think at this point, we're just going to say, bring us, we're anxious, I'll, I'll turn it around. We are anxious to see something come in, and so we're eager to see a plan. If you have a plan that will work for the, for the, for the owner of the...
For the site.
For the site, and for the person who wants to be the tenant, that would be great. I think what you currently have doesn't fit, so we hope you bring back something.
So therefore, my understanding is, tomorrow morning I come in with the plans that were approved, that there'd be no problem, I could get a build the permit, right? With the original plans that they were approved.
Oh, the original. If the board granted you the extension, you could apply to the building department for a building permit to build a daycare center.
To build a daycare center with offices, it was a daycare and offices, it was a mix.
Right.
Okay.
But, but actually, it expired July 22nd, so, yeah.
After that, you'd be back here for site plan and 80 days?
No, we're just, we're not.
90?
We're not giving it.
Oh, it expired maybe the six months?
I'm sorry, yeah, it expired on July 22nd. And so if we don't give you an extension, you, you don't have, you don't, you can't go tomorrow. You can't come tomorrow, right?
You can't go tomorrow.
You can't come tomorrow, right? Okay?
All righty, now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is wetland permit review. This is calendar number 27-24 WP, the Love Preserve on West Road in South Salem, New York. And it's an application from an Eagle Scout for kiosk, trail, bench, bridge, fire pit, restoration, and water breaks. And thank you for your patience, I hope you learned something about what the planning board does. You can share.
Yeah, I'll make a four copy, that's fine. We can, we'll share.
Hi, my name is James Ronan, and so this is my Eagle project at William K. Love Preserve. I'm building a bench, I'm building a 16-foot bridge as a replacement for a rotting bridge that's currently there. I'm removing a fire pit and cleaning the glass and debris around it. I'm moving the information kiosk to a more convenient location, and I'm replacing the water break on the trail with stones from the fire pit that I'm removing. And I'm also rerouting the trail to the new bridge location. So, on the first page of the packet, you can see the, sort of my, my bench idea. I have the before and after. It's going to be a...
And so, I'm, I know that this trail kind of goes from like the road into sort of the back end of Oak Ridge?
Yeah.
Is the bench going to be at the Oak Ridge side or on the street side?
At the Oak Ridge side.
Okay, great. And, and is the kiosk at the same end, or is the, as well?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not actually sure where I'm going to put the kiosk yet, because I need to find a place that's like four feet deep. But I'm going to try to put it close to the, as close to the entrance as I can.
Great, okay. And, and at the Oak Ridge side, I think that's great. I just, when I read through, that was the one question I had, was, because it made a lot of sense, except I wasn't sure which ends were the, those were going to be at.
So the bridge is going to be the standard bridge design that's already been approved. It's, it's what the, it's what the Scouts use for the bridge on their Eagle project. And it has one handrail, and it's going to be across a 16-foot stream, which opens up to a bigger body of water where the current bridge is, which is not usable, because it's all rotted out and kind of like stepping stones, basically.
Okay.
Bridge location, I have it in this, this slide. The bridge design. Going to be using pressure-treated lumber and white oak railroad ties for the base, for the parts that touch the water, because they don't rot. I have the materials list, supplies. The fire pit is, it's not supposed to be there. People basically came and made it themselves, and smashed a bunch of, a bunch of glass around it. So I'm going to be cleaning that up, because it's not safe to have around. The trail, I'm basically going to be taking the existing trail and basically rerouting it to the right, which adds about like 100 or 200 feet to the trail. It doesn't change, doesn't really change it at all, except for the length. Kiosk, going to move it to closer, closer to the entrance, so it's easier for people to see as soon as they get there. The water break doesn't work because it's just a rotting plank of wood. So I'm going to be putting stones from the fire pit there in place of that wood, because they'll last longer, and they're better at rerouting the water off of the trail. And that's it.
Okay. I thought this was a very comprehensive package. I don't know if anyone has any questions about it, but I would look for a motion to have this go administrative so that it could be done, you could just work with Jan to get the permit.
I'll make a motion, absolutely.
Paul makes a motion, you want a second? Okay.
It's fine.
Yeah, right. Any further discussion?
Did the, will I trust, sign your application form?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Okay. So... So, I think this is great and I see a familiar face there that I think has been helping with some of the bridges. And I think this is just great. I know you're part of the, we've seen, we've had a couple Scouts come before and I think just what you're doing to improve the, the trails and the preserves is great. So, I'm really grateful. So, work with Jan. Thank you for your patience here. You don't need to come back to us and I hope we all get to take a walk on it.
Did you guys take a vote?
Oh, did we vote?
Paul moved, Bruce seconded.
Oh, all in favor? Aye. All right, sorry. I gave my speech already. Thank you.
Very well done.
Good luck.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, another wetland permit review. This is calendar number 29-23 WP, calendar number 09-23 SW. This is the Bernabeu vacant land at 96 Post Office Road in Waukeahuck, New York. And this has been before us a few times. We've got a new memo from Jan on it. I think has some of the, some familiar things, but, yes, hello, welcome back.
Hi, Peter Scott here. Yeah, we basically met and went over some outstanding items with the engineering company. We resolved them all. We're trying to get a public hearing scheduled. In the review, we noticed that a lot of things were on the review memo, which we'd already submitted. And so, I just sent the office a synopsis of all the items that were already there in place, even though they were noted as being requested in the review memo. The other item was we had a review of a bond estimate. And in that bond estimate, we did include a 50% maintenance and monitoring plan. We included the 10% contingency. And our bond estimate was like $35,000 plus $5250 for the maintenance and monitoring plan. So, we did submit a bond estimate, which is complying with the regs. Only items that really came of significance in our reviews were, they picked up on a plant count issue, which we had to add a couple more plants to that specific schedule for planting mitigation. And we had to basically, we have a monitoring program that we utilize in other municipalities, but for some reason, the computer ate it when it was being printed. But we basically just fixed that and it appeared magically. So, we'll have to resubmit that to you. It was just one of the, one portion of the, of the monitoring plan did come through on the paper space environment. It happens.
Yeah. So, you don't see any problems getting that all resubmitted if we wanted to do a public hearing?
I have it done already.
Yeah, I, I went through it again today and these, we don't have these items.
You don't have them?
I don't have them. I went through it again because I know you made a remark.
Yeah, the wetlands, wetlands were PDFed and hard copy was submitted to the town.
I went through it again. I don't have them. Not saying, I don't know. I need a comprehensive plan set in one PDF of all, all the sheets with reports.
For the health?
No, for our plan set.
Oh, yeah, sure.
The health, the health department plan set, we have, we have the approval, but it's based on the old plan. It's been revised. You have to go back to the health department.
Yeah, I'm going to do that once we get the final approval. It's condition.
That's fine.
We're looking for a condition on that.
And I, I don't have an objection to that condition, but to say that you've submitted all the things that are in our memo, I just don't have them.
Okay.
Well, we'll get them to you again then. But I also have something from CAC did mention a couple components. We have a buffer requirement. We made an agreement with the neighbor where we put in some buffer trees on the north side of our property to basically provide a visual separation between neighbor and ourselves. We signed an agreement with that. And we're not taking any credit for those trees in any of our mitigation plans. It's just something to ease the neighbor, half the trees are on the neighbor's property, half are on ours. We've signed an agreement between both parties. We kind of took care of that at this point in time. One other question is, we're planting about 240 plants, our mitigation plan. And what we're doing is we're not, we're only analyzing the property for what we're disturbing, but we're not counting the reserve area. So, in all those areas, basically to the south of the property and extending into the, into this buffer, we are, we have extensive planting plan that was proposed. But CAC wanted me to put more trees in, but as you can see in the scout line, which represents our, our tree preservation plan, we have a super dense buffer area already with tree plantings. And putting trees in there, I don't think would be too functional because it's so dense already with trees in that area. So, we, we, in lieu of that, we planted in our, basically our lower plants and bushes throughout the total property. And that was how we decided to mitigate our site. So.
Yeah, you're taking, you're taking some trees down along the road, though. Is there a way that you could, do you have any?
Well, we have one potential encroachment with a proposed plan. And that has to do with these three large oaks. This oak, we put buffers around it and we're not even going near that. This oak basically is, we're 15 feet away, but our septic fields are in one foot of fill. And since our trenches are one foot deep, we're not digging in the ground at all. We're actually building everything on top of the grade, except for about maybe six inches is penetrating into the, into the existing soils. And so, and then the rest of the area between our fields and the tree, again, it's filled one foot.
Yeah, you can't, and you can't plant on top of the fields anyway, but.
Right. And then the last tree, there's another one, the third one is right here. Again, it's in the reserve. And the only way I can think of mitigating this is potentially putting a clause in a resolution indicating that, hey, if we, we build the septic system and the tree dies, we could have the client put in a tree. I have a five-year bond on this thing anyway with all that planting. I could always bond and planting the tree if necessary. Again, I don't anticipate any problem with that tree. And we're not going to, we're not touching this for 30 years.
Yeah, but can you, I don't know, on the, so you've got some plants sort of, right,
This is reserves.
Yeah, sort of, and I'm wondering beyond the reserve, further, which way is that? South. Is there a place to, could you stick a couple of trees there just to keep the CAC happy?
Well, I'll be candid with you. I think, I think our tree inventory kind of ended here. There might be more trees here, but we're not even, we're not even near that area. Kind of, my surveyor did a big path of them.
Yep.
And this density, as you can see, that is pretty much every 30 or 25 to 30 feet on the center extends right to the southern property line. And so, it's, it's a constant spacing. I mean, if you'd like to put some trees in there, we could add a couple if you'd like. I mean, it's up to the board.
Yeah.
The tree that you were just referring to, is that tree nine?
Yeah, we have a couple different lists now. The surveyor listed it slightly different. And that tree is an oak. And on the final.
Is that the 42-inch elm?
Well, they called it an oak by the surveyor, but I think it's an oak. I took pictures of it. And that's right here. It's this one right here.
That's the one that's close proximity to the septic?
The septic here, it's sitting right there. It's actually an oak. So, I sent pictures of it. We took pictures of them. And so, basically, it is on the property line. Again, this was in good shape. The photographs I sent of the trees, these, these were both pretty distressed. This more so. It's just, they're very old and they're falling off branches as we speak. This one was a little better, but again, it's right on the, it goes right through the stone wall, which is a property line and the road front, which we could always, if that's necessary, because we have such a long-term wetland review program set up, we could definitely help you with this if we had to in some manner.
Yeah, okay. All right, so can we schedule, do we agree to schedule a public hearing? So, just to remind you all, we, we did get a letter from several of the adjacent neighbors asking to have a public hearing so they could understand the proposal better. So.
I'm, I'm okay.
Okay, with September?
Yeah.
Okay, we can have, this is September.
For the public hearing?
For a public hearing, right?
14?
September 17th?
Okay, just thinking about this, do you think we, if you get the materials, should we, could we ask for a resolution for September as well?
I can scrap the program.
Okay.
We'll present the materials right away, right again.
Okay, good.
But in terms of the tree, would you like to have the tree? I could add it for this next submission.
Do we need to?
A bonded thing, is that what you're saying?
We have a $35,000 bond plus a, so we could always add to that if you want.
I'd rather just, like, if you can find a place to put, I'm, I'm just, John isn't here from the CAC tonight, but I know that he is an advocate for trees. If you can find a place to put a tree, that would be the less complex thing.
Yeah, I just want to, just wanted to.
You know.
I think our comment was the health department likely make you take down that tree.
Yeah, don't you have to be 15 feet away?
Because you're there.
15 feet. Yeah, we're on it, but.
You're on it. So, our comment was, I mean, show that tree on the health department drawings. They're likely going to tell you to take it down.
We did already.
So, I would, I think you should try to save it, but plan for it to be.
Plan, yeah.
Because you don't want to be, you know, deviating from your plan if all of a sudden it has to come down, luckily a day, you know?
Yeah, we'll, we'll add a tree in lieu of that.
Yeah, or maybe a couple, because you've got a 42-inch one, you know, a two-inch caliper is going to be a little different. But yeah, so, I mean, if you can find a spot, that would be a great thing.
Four or five trees, is that a good idea?
Yeah, but just, I mean.
That's fine.
Because, you know, we do listen to John, so he'll be proud that we're doing this while he's not here.
If it's all, I've just looked at it through and driven past, it's all dense woodland. I'd rather see them do, if you're going to go to four or five trees, I'd rather see like 15, 20 understorey shrubs that are going to have a better success rate possibly. I mean, it's up to the board to thought on that. Or your Lancy Mark or whatever.
I'm turning for another proposal.
It's fairly, there are a lot of trees on the property. There's a lot of wet areas on the property. There's, it's pretty.
Yeah, there's a lot of, but there's also, well, there's adhesives close to that.
That's what I'm saying, not, not having trees because it's so densely, that it might be better to do, just keep with what you have, so many shrubs, it might be more successful than trying to bring in new trees. It's up to you. I mean, you propose what you think, but that's.
I think good compromise would be, like, if you definitely propose a tree, and this has to come down and plant a street tree, I mean, that makes common sense. We could somehow work that into the, into the site. It's on our property, but it's supposed to be a street tree. We could easily put it over the wall.
It'd be nice to maybe have a couple of street trees going down there.
Yeah, that would be good. A couple of street trees. Do we, does that now make you have to go to the town to get a license to plant in the tree area? I don't want to necessarily make it more.
Yeah, yeah, let's not make it any more complex on these.
More complex.
This has been a challenging site to start out with.
Okay.
Okay, we'll work something out. I think we can get something out. We'll, I'll even talk to the town board.
Yeah, I just mean, if it's so dense, that's what my concern is. If it's so dense of a woodland, that's all.
Okay. Great, thank you.
So, where's, I'm for the 17th?
17th.
Right. So, you'll have to work with Kirsten to get the notices out and stuff like that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda is calendar number 20-24 WP. This is the Bear Girl Dock, 106 Bowway, South Salem, New York.
Must be you guys.
Again, I'm, I'm sorry that this is a long meeting, but.
It's been fascinating.
Definitely want to know who owns the water.
Okay, so we did get the plans. I don't know, go ahead, tell us what you want to say.
So, just a quick summary of what we've offered as a suggestion for what we'd like to do to protect our safety as we access the, the stream to the lake. We'd like to have a platform where we can have some seating and then extend in a cantilever format and an additional lower platform that hovers over the stream to provide a safer access to our water craft and to enjoy trees on the lake.
And, you know, I think the cantilever sort of alleviates, well, I should ask you, I mean, I, there, I know there had been some concern in the past with the rushing, the stream sometimes gets pretty flashy and rushy and then goes down to nothing.
You've been seeing that lately.
Yes, we're very familiar.
With the two, two and a half inches of rain we've been getting in each one of these downpours. How, what's the clearance?
It's eight inches.
From the bottom of your structure to the water?
It should be eight inches is what we've depicted on the drawings that we submitted. And we feel, based on our observation through Sandy, through, what was the other one? Ed, Thurma? There were no drains that passed through. We feel that's more than enough clearance to avoid water even approaching the height of the platform that would hover over the stream.
Okay, I took from.
All right, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I did look at all the plans. It was a while ago, so I'm, I've got some of them in my head. Is there anybody else upstream from you?
No.
There isn't? Okay, so that was, that one was off. And if I remember correctly, there was somewhere in there, you said you would lift.
That's, that's one idea. We could, we could have a mechanism to essentially pull the lower platform back onto the higher platform or below, like, so it's kind of sandwiched. That's one option. We kind of wanted to discuss it with the board if there was a preference around whether it can be a permanent fixture in terms of the covering of the platform, if there's a preference to have it be able to be levered back.
I think, I think the whole thing as one unit, which is what it is, is going to weigh, I think, at least 800 pounds.
Well, that's why I was asking the question going, I have a dock.
I don't think it's the, I mean, it would be something for the water to do anything because it'll also be footed in the ground.
Okay. And are you part of any of the associations?
We are part of the Vreeland Association, Vreeland Love Cross Association.
And so, your group is okay with this?
We haven't discussed it with the group just because it's on our property.
I'm just trying to think of what questions, you know, because when you do this, you know there's going to be conversation that's going to come up. Okay. I'm fine.
So, I think this would be something that could go admin if we, if we agreed. So, we need a motion to make this administrative?
Okay, I don't want to make the motion because I'm on TruSeal Lake, so I think that would be a conflict.
For this to go admin?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, Bruce moves.
I'll second.
And call seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Are you abstaining or are you whining?
Do, should I?
You don't have any material gain. There's no conflict of interest. Aye, okay. I just want to make sure for the, for the minute. Okay, so you'll work with Jan?
Great.
Yeah, I had the same question about how are you ever going to fold something that heavy, so I, I don't know.
We don't have to do that, but just because the, the engineering of it is more complex.
Right. So, I'm okay if it doesn't fold, I think. I don't, because I just see that being more complications and trouble in the future.
Yeah, I don't think we should be involved in that.
Yeah.
This is, we wish you the best.
Yeah, and I was asking the question because if you get a tree coming down and the logs coming down.
Yeah.
And it doesn't have clearance, it's going to take that out.
Yeah, yes, understood. There, there's a waterfall above us that would capture.
That would catch anything?
We've had trees actually do that and they catch before that location. And that's, there's been caught around that, yeah. Yeah, for us too.
Okay.
We don't want to do it again.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda, calendar number 26-24 WP, calendar number 17-24 SW. This is the Gorski vacant land, 331 Smith Ridge Road, South Salem. is the Gorski vacant land, 331 Smith Ridge Road, South Salem, New York, application for well, septic and house.
Good evening.
Hello.
You know, I'll tell you, when I, I was told I'm the last kid in the block, that's why I'm last, you know, I was kind of happy, because nobody called me a kid before. Not, not for a long time.
Okay.
Anyway, this is a lot on 331 Smith Ridge Road, my name is John Malazie, I'm an engineer, I live in 60 Spring Hill Lane North in Stamford, Connecticut, and I represent Mrs. Gorski. This is a lot, a subdivision that was made, I, today, when, or the other day, when they received all the memos and all the memorandum from the Conservation Agency or whatever, it seems strange to me, because it's like they're reinventing the wheel on this, on this lot. This lot was created in a subdivision where it was two lots put together and then they made three. Okay, there was houses on it, lot number two that we're talking about, one that was, there's a board resolution, I understand that a permit already exists, the wetland permit, and the, actually, there's a bond that's been issued, so there was no permit, why is there a bond? So I was under the impression that we're here doing an amendment to an existing permit. If you say, you see, this is the map from the land record, and what it says to do when you're building lot number two is to go to the building department, so here, it says that the, the, it should be located within the building envelope. So there was seven, part of the resolution, there was seven drawings that were made part of it, was development drawings, because usually, when you do subdivision, you don't require somebody to do a septic design or storm design, so when I talked to the planning director, I thought we were coming in more for an amendment, because what she, Mrs. Gorski wants to do, put a deck in the back that was not part of the original approval. So I was in here, prepared to reinvent the wheel, we, I wanted to build on something that we had already, so when they told me that we had to go back, I understood that we had to, because we adding, we wanted to add a stone wall in the front, which is, by the way, is not a retaining wall, it's just a stone wall 18 by 18. We do have an approval from the DOT for that, and she and the lady from DOT says that we could get a permit as soon as we have a contractor and we give him the insurance certificate, and we have an approval from the Health Department, I have to make some changes, but everything is exactly where it was approved before, and everything is spelled out, this is the map that's on file with the land record, and it spells out what to do here, what to do when we go and get a permit for lot number two. It tells here exactly what the building inspector should do, make sure that everything that we're proposing is exactly what was approved. The same thing with the planning, we, we, we had some soil scientists look at the site and they say there was no wetlands, but at this point, we wanted to build, we had the approval, we don't mind building as part of the way it was approved, either there is wetlands or not. If you've seen the resolution, they say that it's an intermittent wetland, it's not something that's a permanent, I don't know what they mean by that, but that's what they're saying in the resolution. The resolution was.
Could that be a vernal pool?
September 28, 2010.
I haven't been there.
And it spells out a lot of where I asked for, especially for lot number two.
Can I, I can interrupt if you don't mind, I was here for the original approval, but I'll remember, this was the Mombach subdivision.
Where is? Yeah, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I'm going through my head, going, have I seen this before?
Yeah, it's, it took a long time, it took a long time, but let me just explain, because you're right, there is a lot of, there was, there was a subdivision plot approval, and then there was constructions, construction drawings approved for this particular lot, but that had an expiration date. So the subdivision plot exists, it's good forever, but the, there was an individual wetland permit and stormwater permit instead of building plans, site plans for, for that particular lot.
That thing is forever.
The plot is forever, not the construction drawings.
But no, the notes on it, signed by the, it's right on this.
You, you had a, when you take a look at the resolution, it was for, not only just for the subdivision, it was for the development of that lot that went along with the wetlands permit, which expired, because they never pulled the building permit.
Why is that, that they're keeping $12,000 then?
That got transferred, because there was a mitigation bond, because they.
For, for the building, for planting the trees.
He never, he never did, so the original resolution.
But the bond is still keeping it, though.
The bond is, is here, so your client wouldn't need to put up that bond, it's still in place.
Yeah, for the, right, yes.
It's still there, so that, it got transferred, but you don't have, you don't have a valid wetland permit or stormwater permit to develop the lot, you have the lot.
But, but, okay, can I have a question, I mean, because I don't know this, about the land records or whatever, this is a map that's been signed and has been filed.
The subdivision plot, yes.
It's this map, it's not subdivision, it's this document that's in the land record.
Yeah, but all, all the county, all the county concerned about is whether a lot has been approved.
That's, oh, the other notes, then, they're met.
With regard to, you know, individual local requirements with regard to development of a lot, right, the county recognizes.
No, no, I understand that, but if.
So, no, what Yan is saying is, all right, so you've got the lot, way back when there was a wetland permit and a stormwater permit that said you could build, those are gone, they've expired, so you now have to come back before this.
So when somebody's buying, okay, I don't know, I'm an engineer, not a lawyer or whatever, so if somebody is buying a piece of property, goes and look at this document at the county clerk, okay, and he reads all this, that mean that's void?
Well, they had the resolution, the resolution's clear as to what expires, and I did speak to your clients before they purchased the property and let them know exactly this, so.
Well, anyway, the, the point is, the point is, I, I was, as far as I was concerned, I prepared all the drawing based on what was not approved before.
What, what the, what the town has seen, we never saw, because it was conditioned with the DOT permit.
Yeah, I got that.
So we haven't seen the DOT permit.
Okay, okay, you go to you, okay.
We don't have, the, the Health Department drawings, you know, the locations were shown, but they never got individual septic and well permits.
Well, we did, we have it.
So we don't have that. And then the wetland permit and the stormwater permit expired, so those are, those are the things that you need to.
Okay, that, that's fine, because of whatever.
And also regulations change, the stormwater regulations have changed since, so now you're gonna have to comply with the new regs, it's just the way it is.
Okay, so, but then, we have a, we have a, so then, the map, why then the, the planning board, the chairman has to sign something, why have go through all the problems of putting this in? From what, what I would, what I would suggest that that is, is because the planning board wanted to make sure when it was developed, was developed exactly the way they wanted to do it.
Well, and if they had developed it, if they had developed.
So that's what we're doing, we're doing exactly what.
But you're not amending something, you're getting something new.
New, so what had happened, if they did, if, right after they, this all got signed, you started to do it, you would have, these things wouldn't have expired. Now that they're expired, it's a little bit of a.
I'm sorry.
Blank sheet.
The expiration, what was that, was there any resolution expiration date?
Oh, yeah.
So, but I think.
Yeah, no, okay, so what we just said, it just, I got all the, the, so what do we do? Do I go through, knowing that what was approved before, that I continue going with that, and are we considering that new application completely then?
Yeah, but, I mean, it's, we know it's a legal lot, right, so you, you should propose what you wanna propose.
Okay, no, we, we did, so I get the things, I'll change what we are to do, so that's fine, just I wanted to see the mechanism.
I wanna go back out, we weren't the wetland consultant at the time this was approved, so I didn't evaluate the wetlands, I'm not familiar with it, so I'm aware that.
Yeah, it said that to make an appointment for that.
Yeah, so we'll go out and take a look, if the wetland's not there, you don't have.
Well, actually, it might be even better, but just we wanna move because we want to build it.
The new wetland, your wetland scientist is Paul Jennings, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Paul knows what he's, Paul knows what he's doing, if there's a wetland on the property, Paul's gonna find it, you know, so.
Right, well, I just, the only thing that, when you said intermittent, that made me wonder if it could be a vernal pool that's there.
I think it was a very marginal area.
Yeah. Just a corner.
So, but, yes, so I think the first thing we need to do is just give it to the building inspector, I'm sure it is compliant unless there's some codes that have changed in the interim, but we can give it to.
Well, he does have the drawings, I gave him, that's what we filed first.
Right.
If we can go back and look at those.
Right, so if we agree, I will.
What was the date on?
Well, you see, what would you.
2010, right?
I'm sorry?
That was, that was in 2010, was the date?
No, this was filed in, in 12, 2012, that the resolution is September 28, 2010.
Twenty, okay, so.
That would have.
So the resolution was.
I'll have a copy of the resolution.
Thank you.
How could that have a later date?
Well, because they could have, it takes a while to get the milars and I don't know what might have happened. Do you have the, do you want the resolution?
You know that, the septic requirements are, have been changed, so they're.
No, no, they're, they're gonna help you.
Yeah.
The septic is really, let me see, okay, friends, here's the email from DOT, the revised plans are acceptable, please provide the contractors an addition permit T on the permit and provide the insurance document. So she already, that's from, from DOT, and the realias.
And the realias, yeah.
Okay, and also, I have, also from the Health Department, your revised plans have been reviewed, I have no more comments, please submit the complete set of plans and application, that was done. They, what they do, they took.
Those are your plans?
Yes, yes, yeah, and this was Ruben Berius. What is that, so those, what we have, we know that, and they go exactly where they go there, but it's the new regulation and all that was approved, good. Okay, so we, we have that, the only problem then is a drawing, whatever says there, we love to, since we're going there, you're gonna be there too, they, and one of the notes said that we require to do some engineering tasks for the cool tax site, can you do that or it'll be somebody else? Can we do the same day that we have a wetlands or not?
I probably wouldn't, I could, but I probably wouldn't just because of the timing, so we can, my office will witness your, your deep in perks, but it wouldn't be there.
It won't be you, okay, but you'll be there for the wetlands?
Yeah.
Okay.
You could call me tomorrow, we could schedule that if you wanna walk it with me.
Yeah, yeah. I'll, I'll, do, I'll give you a call, are you gonna be around tomorrow? Oh, no, I'll call you tomorrow and then we'll schedule.
Call the door.
Then how do we proceed with the board, then, how does it work? Do we, do we have a public hearing or just the comes for approval or?
Yeah, you can have.
So I think, I think what the first thing is, is if you, if you want to change things, what I think I'm hearing is.
Yeah, it's a deck in the back.
You can do that, so just, so bring us.
If there is no wetlands, there is no problem, if there is.
Right, yeah, so you bring us what you wanna do.
I have it.
Right.
It's already, you have it.
Okay, and then, and then, yeah, if there's no wetlands, things get a lot easier, you know, for us about, and mitigation and everything, things, it's kinda become stormwater, right, and it becomes much, much easier.
It's really, all our elements are stormwater, right?
Right, so, so I think that's basically, you know, you just.
No, 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 we're interested in the timing, okay?
Right, right.
Because I know what I have to do, and I get it done, and then we get it done.
Yeah, you get it.
The technical part, they get done, whatever's required.
So.
The timing from your board.
Right, right, so our next meeting is gonna be September 17, and the submission date was September.
But resubmission, though, it's still on time for a resubmission.
Yeah.
On August 28.
27.
Right, August 27?
This is gonna be resubmission.
Yeah.
Right.
August 27.
So next Tuesday.
Next, so next week.
Next week, next Thursday, let me see.
Next Tuesday.
You may call tomorrow, we'll schedule, we can go over the comments if you want, and if you can make the resubmission, you can get on for the September.
Right, and so, so I think a lot of it is just whatever happens with the, if there's no wetland, you know, if there's wetland there, you have to do mitigation and all that stuff.
And let's say, let's assume now that we do have the wetlands just exactly the way it is.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, what would happen with a change with the deck, then it makes a different?
Well, I think what you would do.
Where it is, right here, right behind here, because there's a drop of eight feet from here to here, and she has no way to.
Right, right, I mean, one of the things that, so I think Yan said that the, the septic, although if you've already gotten it approved, maybe it's, I mean, sometime, what we've seen is the septic fields have gotten smaller.
Oh, no, they're back here, so.
Yeah, they've gotten smaller, so you might be able to even move the, if you wanted, to move the house a little closer to the road, and then you can put the, you know, it's all.
It might create, that might go back to the.
I don't know, yeah, yeah, no, I understand, so, but if there is, I mean, then we'd wanna see some mitigation around to keep.
Yeah, or.
To keep the wetland from getting, you know.
Yeah, there was a mitigation plan.
There was.
That's what the bond was.
Yeah, that's what the bond was for.
Right, yeah.
And also the, let me ask you a different, a question, on the deck and the, and the back, would it make a difference, instead of putting posts and we make a cantilever out, instead of having 12 feet, I might get an eight foot out and, so that they post those that go on the ground?
The deck actually is not even subject to a wetland permit at this point.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
No, it doesn't make a difference, but it does make a difference when you put something in it.
Yeah, I think you do what you wanna do, and we'll, I mean, I think at this point, you should, you should do, tell us what you want, you know, and then.
We, we, yeah, I do have that already, just a few things I have to change based on the letter that.
Okay, we'll do that.
Okay, okay, so I think we'll see you in September, and again, thank you for your patience, I know this is a longer than normal meeting for us, but we had a lot happening tonight.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item on our agenda is a correspondence matter, which is calendar number 10-15 BP, calendar number 20-17 WP, calendar number 05-17 SW. This is the Lewisboro Commons, they're, they're looking for the final release of the apartment's construction performance bond, but because this is now something that's, that's a site plan, we are in this position where what we have to do is adopt a motion to ask the town board to basically delegate the process back to the planning board.
Correct.
To, to make a decision about the, about this, so I'd look for a motion to.
Request the town board.
Yes, to send a letter to request that of the town board. Bruce moves.
I'll second it.
Jan seconds, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
You'll need to set a public hearing also.
Right, so.
There's a public.
Yeah, so we, unfortunately, because this is a site plan, we have to do a public hearing on this, so September, boom, September's gonna be.
It's gotta be a great month.
I'm not.
Paul's just burning, burning like mad, okay.
Maybe we should just like these stocks over.
The next item on the agenda is a, another request for release, but this time it's a. wetland mitigation, so it's within our control. So, this is calendar number 08-02 PB, this is JVG Estates, which was formerly the Popoli subdivision on Route 35, it's Bluestone Lane in South Salem, New York. So, this, we can ask Yan to go inspect and ask Judd to draft a memo for the September meeting.
Yeah, resolution.
Oh, sorry, a resolution, what did I say?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so if you all agree, that's what we're doing. Okay, the next item on the agenda was something I added, which is just this, I did get a note from Katie McGinn saying that she expects, well, first of all, that the comprehensive plan, plan has passed. She expects in September, the town board will refer to us as they required the second part of the comp plan, which is comp plan zoning code changes. I'm kind of going to let you know, I think probably the best way for us to do this, once we have the referral, is to consider scheduling a meeting, and we can probably plan to do that at our September meeting, so I'm just going to ask people to bring calendars and see if we can, can...
Let's see what they give us.
Yeah.
That's a good point, because, the question is, how, yeah, how are they going to package it? There is a question of whether this comes kind of in bite-sized packages, because there's a lot to cover, or whether it's going to be one big chunk, or two big chunks, or four little, smaller chunks, yes, so, let's see what they do.
I mean, I'm just, as I look at what's for September, I don't think that we're going to have bandwidth or time to really consider it at our September meeting, so again, we should probably think about that. Okay, that's really all I had to say. I mean, again, we don't know what's going to get referred to us yet, so we'll look at it then. The next item on the agenda is the minutes of July 16, 2024. I'd look for a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes. Good job.
And Bruce seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Our next meeting date, I'm announcing, is September 17, 2024. I'd look for a motion to adjourn the meeting at 10:27.
It's better than last month.
Yeah, by just a few minutes, but not much. Okay, was that a motion?
Motion is...
I think Paul sort of, he just said...
I think that was a motion.
Paul and John seconds?
Yeah.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you, guys.